We'll call a meeting to order for Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, for the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, which is held in the middle school library and livestream on DSC TV. So with that being said, before we get started, we do have a change in the agenda. So we need to have a motion to switch the order because it's not valid as we publish the agendas. So what we're going to do is, the agenda the way it's listed, is we go to community comments and then the student representatives. We'd like to move after the student representative update, the items for discussion. And there are four parts to that. And we're going to start with the bottom one, student proposal for high school therapy dog as the first item. So that would be A. Then it will go in order of B, proposed change to policy, ECAF. C will be the draft of the high school 2026-27 program of studies. And D would be policy IKF, graduation requirements. So we'll put that in between the student rep update and superintendent comments. And then we would proceed normally with superintendent comments, financial reports, action items, consent, and informational items. So do I have a motion to change that agenda? Jeff?
I move to reorder the agenda as you've stated.
Second? There you go. Mary, second? Any discussion? All in favor? So everyone here is in favor. Toa is not with us. So that is what we have. So with that being said, let's begin with our community comments. Is there anyone here from the community or online who wishes to make a comment? Yes, so the preamble to this, it's a three-minute community comment. And we would like for, if there is something that's being repeated, just to try to move the discussion forward. And if you'll state your name, that way we know and what town you're from. Okay?
Well, my name's Amelia Landau, and I'm actually not a resident of either Dover or Sherburne, but I am an employee of Sherburne and Holliston. I'm the town's new sustainability manager. I'm shared between both fountains. And I wanted to introduce myself to the committee tonight and just sort of see some of your goings-on. I'm going to be hopefully getting more involved in trying to, you know, save some money and doing energy efficiency improvements and just generally trying to make the schools more sustainable and environmentally friendly. So I'd be happy to meet, you know, to discuss, you know, goals further. But for now, I'm just happy to be here, you know, see everyone.
It's nice to meet you. So we're, as you know, since we're a joint committee, I'm Angie Johnson and I'm the chair. And this is Jeff and he's the co-chair. And he's our Dover side. So, you know, there you go.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And Beth and I have both met with Amelia and Jeremy.
Wonderful.
A month or so ago.
Wonderful. Thank you and welcome. Thanks for coming. Okay, and the next community comment?
Hi, I'm Leland Toll. I am a Sherburne parent of Pine Hill of two children in kindergarten and second grade. I'm not quite sure if this is, this is my first time at any school committee meeting. So I think regional is appropriate, but you'll let me know. So I wanted to raise a concern that I myself have experienced and heard from many families, the frequent Wednesday early dismissals. I fully support the need for high-quality professional development for our teachers. That's not in question. But the structure of early dismissals has created significant challenges. I would like to ask the committee to evaluate its impact and consider changes to allow for more stability. Speaking personally, the instability of the weekly schedule created so much strain in my household that it contributed directly to my decision to leave my former job. And I know I am far from alone. National data show that childcare-related schedule disruptions disproportionately affect women. Pew reports that about 60% of working mothers will rearrange their schedule for schools compared with 20% of fathers. This pattern is reflected in our community as well, in which in many households, it is the mother who reduces work time or repeatedly leaves early on Wednesdays. When you add the weekly early dismissals to the natural rhythm of school holidays, long weekends, and teacher workdays, many families experience near-weekly disruptions to the schedule, especially in the fall and winter months. To date at Pine Hill, we have only had three weeks this school year out of 15 that have not had a closure or early dismissal, making it hard to find any cadence. Even small interruptions, when they occur this frequently, generate meaningful stress, logistical challenges, and lost work hours. I also want to emphasize the impact on the children themselves. Consistency and predictability are foundational to learning. Midweek disruptions break the flow of academic instruction, interrupt classroom routines, and can make it harder for some children, especially younger ones who thrive on structure, to maintain focus and emotional regulation. It's also notable that we have a waiting list for extended-day programming. For many families, extended day is the only option besides private in-home childcare, if you can afford it, that to cover the workdays during early dismissals. Reconsidering the midweek structure has the potential not only to ease the burden on household schedules, but could potentially relieve pressure on the extended-day program, which cannot absorb the demand created by weekly interruptions. Tonight, I'm not proposing a specific alternative. Instead, I respectfully ask the committee to reconsider the current model and present alternatives that minimize disruption during this school year. Options might include moving early dismissals to Fridays, when many families have more flexibility, condensing professional development days into whole days, or bookending the holidays. A brief parent survey or structured review could provide valuable local data and help determine where there's better balance between supporting teacher development and promoting stability for students and families. Thank you for your dedication and for your willingness to consider this issue. I hope that timely progress can be made, and I'd be happy to be pointed into a direction to bring this issue further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you are, we vote on the calendar as like three committees. Since we're a blended place, it's kind of a little different. So we vote on it, but also the Sherburne School Committee is specific to Pine Hill. So that might be a forum too, or you may wish to comment as well if you haven't already. But if you have, it's good that we all, because we will all vote on this.
So I guess, I wonder then, like, because there's also the joint school committee that includes the union, right? This is a schedule, the elementary early dismissal schedule is Chicaring and Pine Hill, right? So it does seem like a regional issue.
Right, well, we handle the middle school and the high school. And then when we all come together as a joint is when the Chicaring, the Dover School Committee and the Sherburne School Committee are here. So that is another avenue. If you want to address everybody at the same time, that would help. Because we don't, well, at the middle and the high school, we don't get much half-day.
The elementary's have more. So I would recommend that you email that to both the Chicaring and the Pine Hill, the Sherburne and Dover School Committee chairs. And then the three of us are at all three meetings. We're happy to connect with the chairs and make sure that they raise that as a concern from the audience. And then as we move into the new year, we'll be looking at next year's calendars. The timing is good.
Thank you.
Right, because we'll start the calendars. But like I said, we'll all vote on it.
Well, that was the concern with coming tonight. I know the calendars are in.
And it's very confusing because we are, I mean, we're three committees. It's confusing to us and we're on the committee. So believe me, I get it. I totally get it. So, yeah.
But don't feel like you have to show up three times?
No, you don't.
You can just order it and we'll make sure that it comes up.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Oh, you're always welcome.
Yeah, you're always, I mean, the more the merrier. We enjoy it, especially on this lovely night. Thank you.
Great.
But thank you. And again, you had good points and you had alternatives, which, thank you.
Teresa Conroy, resident of Sherburne. I have three children, two of which are at Pine Hill in third grade and first grade. My third, Jethal, is in kindergarten next year. And I attended with Leland. We've spoken to several families that echo and support this request. So we just respectfully request that you consider. So the half-days would be really helpful if they were moved to Fridays. And then if some of the professional development days, like the one yesterday, was really helpful, especially in my household, the continuity for my children I have in-home care. So, I mean, that is important, but just more on their, especially getting the school year off on the right foot. The first couple of weeks, it's very disruptive when there's not a full five days right in a row. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Is there any more? Is there, there's no one online, correct? All right, then I'm going to close the community comment. But thank you all for attending and bringing this to our attention. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the student representatives update.
Evelyn Toll is here tonight. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you had a lovely Thanksgiving break. I'm just going to share a brief recap of our recent spirit week at the high school. And I'm thrilled to report that I think that Spirit Week was a fairly successful turnout. We had a lot of people, a lot of students participating in school spirit. And in terms of the class rankings, we had the seniors on top, followed by the sophomores, freshmen in third, and the juniors in fourth. And additionally, we have this tradition at the high school to do a mural competition. So each grade gathers together and creates a mural for their respective class. And it was very inspiring to see. We saw a lot of creativity from all of our students. A lot of it was inspired by recent pop culture, like Wicked Two and Stranger Things season. So it really brought our school committee together. And I think our pep rally was equally as energetic and full of excitement. And it definitely set a very lively tone for the Thanksgiving break. Overall, Spirit Week was a wonderful experience, and it highlighted our school's spirit and the creativity of our students. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We got to get the juniors to up their game. Okay, so the next thing is the items for discussion. And so we're going to start with the student proposal for the high school therapy dog.
Great. So we have Elise Passata, who is a senior, here to present tonight. And this is something that she has brought forward to myself, Mr. Conklin, Mr. Smith, Mr. Amara, last year. And she's been doing a lot of homework and research. And she's here tonight to share her thoughts and ideas with you.
Hi, thank you so much for sharing this space. Oh, thank you. If you don't know me, I'm Elise Passata. I've been here for over 10 years in the school system. I went to school at Pine Hill. And I'm at the high school, a senior here. I'm pretty involved in the community, I'd like to say. I'm a captain of the field hockey team and the track team. And I'm also the president of the medical club and founded the veterinary club. So today, I'd like to introduce the Positive Impact Project. It's something that I've been pretty passionate about for the past couple of months because it ties in my passion and my love for animals, but also making a change in the community. So the summer head goal of this project is to introduce a certified therapy dog into the community. And therefore, it would reduce stress and contribute to the school well-being and create an environment where students come to school and they can focus on their schoolwork rather than focusing on stress and everything that might concern them. So before I wander in the background and why I started this, I started this because I felt that there are a lot of students in the community, especially in the high school and the middle school, who come to school really stressed and have trouble focusing on their work because they don't know how to handle their stress and they don't really know how to put that into something. And instead, they put it into their schoolwork. And a lot of students have started to view school as a place of stress and anxiety rather than a place to work in itself. And in turn, I have viewed that problem and have tried to take initiative. And one of my ways of doing that is by implementing a therapy dog into the school system. In turn, the therapy dog would hopefully reduce emotional stress or offer support for students. If anyone was having a bad day, they could use it as an outlet and visit it just to add a little bit more positivity into their school day. And it also kind of unifies the community. And it would be something that all the students could look forward to, even if it was at Pine Hill or Chicaring. The dog can make occasional visits there as well. So my main purpose, in my background, I, from the moment I could walk, have always been interested in animals. And I've also been, I've also had issues with anxiety in my past. And I have seen my friends struggle with anxiety in my class. And seeing all my friends struggle with anxiety and my peers struggle with anxiety has just motivated me to want to implement this even more because that's something that could improve the well-being of the students. And it's something that I've enjoyed and I have reaped the benefit from because I've been surrounded by animals in professional environments and on farms and working at a low-cost clinic over the summer. So the main issue, just to state it and identify it, is the students from the DS committee increasingly reporting they have difficulty managing stress, accessing help to manage that stress, and in turn, that's creating academic pressure and emotional drainage. Just to sum it up, in actual evidence from the 2021 Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, there was a rise in anxiety symptoms that were reported by all the students who took the survey. And stress levels have climbed with each grade. So we've seen that in the high school, there's a lot more stress than in the elementary school, for instance. And tying that to the therapy dog from the Mayo Clinic, 77% of students reported reduced anxiety after a therapy dog was implemented into the school system. So that just goes to show that over 50% of students did benefit from that issue. And as a result, that lowers blood pressure, reduces heart rate, and it improves your mood, which also leads to a more productive environment and a workplace, and also at-home life after going back from school. So the solution to this issue that I'm proposing is to introduce a therapy dog that would be present at the high school and would make visits to the middle school as well. And this would create low-pressure opportunities for students to reset emotionally during the day. And again, unify the community and just create a calmer environment where kids will look forward to coming to school instead of being scared for the next test or just being worried in general. So in doing so, the first step was kind of meeting with Mr. Smith and Mr. Amara, and then creating a student input survey where we got word from the students of what they thought would be great and what they supported. Over 97.6% of students would be comfortable interacting with a therapy dog. 96.3% agree that therapy dogs offer positive benefits to the school committee. And 93.9% believe a therapy dog would positively impact the emotional well-being of the community of the high school and the middle school. So as you can see here, just some data plots that the students contributed. So the general logistics of the implementation would include a therapy dog being based at the Dover Sherburne High School. One faculty handler would be responsible for the daily care of the therapy dog and would take it home and take care of it after school hours. That handler would possibly include one of the guidance counselors, which would work very well in our instance because, again, this is related to mental health. And organizations would supply support and training of a therapy dog, which would mean that they would do everything, and then the therapy dog would come and be implemented into the school system. So the role of the handler includes taking care of the therapy dog and receiving their own certification and training. I know it sounds like a lot, but when you work with a specific organization that we would choose, they would handle that all for them. And it is a very seamless process. There's a couple of steps, but that's for the handler. And that's just one person that would take care of the dog. They take care of the dog's needs and that home life as well as during the day and kind of overseeing the dog. So the process of getting the therapy dog, there are a couple of steps. The first step is fitting a therapy dog to an organization. So finding an organization that works best for us, and then finding a therapy dog through that. We would also have to determine the handler, which would be one person at the middle school or at the high school, most likely the high school, that would agree to take full custody of the dog and receive certification that way. The school would also have to participate in an evaluation just to make sure that we are able to have a therapy dog here. And then that would include matching with the dog in fundraising. That goes along with that. So there are multiple organizations that would be available to help us with this process. I researched some of the best ones for our needs that would include handling mental health and being on the more emotional side rather than the service side. Service is more for people with actual disabilities and veterans, and the list goes on. But this is more emotional. So it'd be for student mental health rather than physical attributes. So the top four that I found, the organizations that I found, were Needs in Massachusetts, Canines for Ambility, ACTS, and Paws for People. These are all very good options, and they offer their own benefits. Personally, the one I recommend most is Paws for People. But I can provide a lot more information on those once we get into it. So the cost in fundraising is probably the biggest concern. But it is also the biggest thing that we could handle and makes the most fun for coming up with ideas for. Typically, the fundraising requirement is $7,000 to $15,000. It depends on the organization. And that could also be a leading factor in us choosing which organization to use. Funds are only due after the application. So the first step would be to actually apply. And then whichever organization is chosen, you work through that with them, and you're appointed a representative that helps you with all of the fundraising aspects. The costs include the training, the placement, the support, and insurance, which is decided from different organizations. So some of my ideas for fundraising, there's a lot, and there can be more that can be come up with. But these are just some of the ones that I have researched. The first one is partnering with some of the clubs. Just to be clear, all fundraising would be affiliated outside of the school district. So that would be something that I would take initiative of with some other students, but it would not be related to the school district at all. I have, I am close with the DSXTHO leader, which is the mental health club at our school. And we decided that we could possibly fundraise together. So we have the medical club and the veterinary club and the DSXTHO fundraise together. There are also other options, including working with local small businesses, having a fundraising night. I also thought of having like a fun run that we could raise money for. So all of those are options, and there's many more that we could decide on. So the process and next steps. First, if we were to go with this, would be confirming the handler. That's the first step because on all of the applications, that's what's required. The handler needs to fill the application out. Completing the applications, of course, after. And then beginning the fundraising steps once you're assigned with a specific organization, because it does take some time to get assigned to a dog and match with a certain dog. And then upon acceptance, launching a fundraising campaign and the steps that come after that. So insurance, logistics, training, the handler, of course, getting it adjusted to the school, and implementing it across the buildings. So in summary, I'm hoping to gain approval to implement a therapy dog in the program and in the school district, approval to initiate fundraising efforts. Because if we start those early, we can be ready for when they're actually due. Permission to move forward with handler identification, approval to submit an application to any organization, and partnership to coordinate with logistics and implementation. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. If not, thank you so much.
Do I have questions?
No, it was amazing. I'm so impressed.
And you do have some people in mind as handlers, it seems.
Yes, there are a couple of people in mind. Mr. Williamson is definitely a fact, a person in mind. He's just, he has some, in addition to his family. So we're not sure if that would work. But he said that he's definitely considering. There's also a couple other guidance counselors that we could definitely work with.
Okay.
You mentioned a couple other school districts. Did you, do you have a count of nearby school districts that also have dogs?
Yeah, there's definitely more than five. I know that Franklin has one, Natick has one, Framingham has one. So definitely local school districts. And they've all implemented it really well. Usually, the dogs stay in the guidance department. And they've all had success. I have a couple articles that I could send as resources if anyone's interested.
I can also send that Holliston, Hopkinton, King Philip, Ashland, Walpole, and Metcalfe have dogs.
Do it change anything from the handbook? I mean, usually things are covered by like, American With Disabilities Act and things like that.
Policy.
No, probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there is a service, and with, no, you're not on our committee. I was going to say, are you, no, you're not on our Friday morning meetings, the last hours. It's so fun. So there is a IMGA, which is a policy. And it's, we're addressing that now because that's one of the next ones we're going to. So there would be a policy that encompasses it. The main part is, we're not going to, there has to be an owner or person having custody controls of the handler.
Yeah.
Like she said, that's the main part to start with. That's why I asked about the handler part.
Yeah, I know you worked on it. We have them at the hospitals. People love them. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the thing too. I mean, I know that we've brought in dogs before. But unfortunately, those costs have risen significantly. It used to not be so much, but now it is quite a bit.
Is that insurance one-time fundraiser or an annual?
Yeah, that's something we're still figuring out. I think it depends on the organization that you use. Some of them help you cover, and others, it's basically school. So I think it just depends on which organization you use.
But that big chunk of money is for training the dog.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then it would just, we'd have to figure out the insurance piece. But the insurance is usually covered by whatever carrier that organization works with. So it's not like an additional task for us to accomplish.
A little bit of a background too. So we have used OPI, which are golden retrievers and that are trained by law enforcement for different roles. And also eventually, they sort of get into schools. And we had been using them for our exams. We have also used them, unfortunately, when we had some tragedies in our community, and they were incredibly helpful. Up until last year, that was a service that they provided to local communities. And beginning last year, they notified me that they'd be charging $350 per day for a visit, which is pretty steep. We used to receive anywhere between two and six dogs. And they were now saying that this could be one to two dogs. So unfortunately, they really changed their process. I respect that. They are a business. We also do use West, who is a dog in Sherburne that does visit all the schools from time to time. And that has been very successful as well. And I agree with Elise. And uh I, I agree with Elise, you know, it has been found to be incredibly successful and positive. And we have found times when we can do it. For me, it's making sure also that whoever that handler is can balance the expectations and responsibilities that they have in their position, which is really important, uh with that of also being a dog handler. So it would, it's a lot of juggling and I would want to ensure that that person's primary focus was the kids. And second focus was making sure the dog is providing emotional support.
Thank you for bringing up West because that brings up a good point. You know, if there are additional costs that come down the road, I think what Wes Sandler has done is um uh fundraising uh through selling sweatshirts and T-shirts and stickers with West on them. And that's how they maintain some of the, the cost.
He's a good boy. He's a good boy.
Yeah.
Insurance is a yearly cost, you know, just like your homeowners or anything. It's, that's a yearly cost.
It's probably on two fronts. It's actually the insurance, medical insurance for the dog and then a rider on probably the school policy just for any, if the dog were to happen to bite.
Anything else? Do I?
So are you looking for an endorsement to continue?
Yes.
Okay, so do I need a motion for that?
Yeah, it's an unofficial vote of support.
So just an unofficial, shall we just turn it to a whole? This is probably the easiest thing because it's not a motion. So all in favor of us telling Elise to go ahead and let's further explore this situation? If you can do a show of hands, please. All right, Elise, I'm rooting for you and the dog. I gotta tell you, if I worked here, I would be your handler. But you know, I can't, I can't be on school committee and we're here.
Well, we do have a couple physicians coming up.
If I'm on school committee, I'll go there. Just kidding. Okay, so thank you and I, you did a great presentation. Very nice.
And you're welcome to stay.
You all don't have to stay. It is, I know it's a fun night, but everyone, you know. Okay, so next, um, now we have the proposed change to policy E C A F. I met with Beth today on E and that's, it's, E's a fun, a fun part of the policy. If you need some light reading at night, um go to the policy and start reading E because we're revising all of E. Um, so it's been great. So E C A F is with regard to the security cameras um which we have on buses, which is a new thing for us. We didn't have them, we, we didn't have a policy for that because we, we didn't have them on the buses. So, so now we do have them or will have them. And so obviously, because we will, we have to have a policy on it because we have to have a policy for everything. So if, there we go, there's the language. So the E C A F at present, um it permits the use of security cameras in the district buildings and on school grounds. So we already have that currently in the policy. But it does not include school transportation vehicles. And so to enable us to move forward with this, um, we're recommending the revising of the opening sentence of the policy's third paragraph with the proposed addition is underlined. So here's the paragraph. "In pursuit of this objective, the school committee authorizes the use of security cameras in school district buildings, school transportation vehicles, and on its property to ensure the health, welfare, and safety of all students, staff, and visitors to deter theft, vandalism, and other negative behavior, to safeguard district buildings, grounds, and equipment, and to monitor unauthorized individuals in or on school property." So this is our first reading of it, right? And then, so if you, if we, we'll have to then go to the second reading, which will be at the joint meeting on January thirteenth. And um then we could vote on it after that and have it installed as part of our new language. So um, the school transportation vehicles is in addition to um, we, we have it for buses and like if there is another vehicle, because sometimes we use the athletic, I mean, so we wanted to make sure that it's covered in everything because as you know, in a policy, when we have to change things, we'll have to come together and vote on it every time. So even if we change an and or they, we'd have to vote on it. So crazy enough. So for the first reading, we don't have to vote on the first reading at all. So this is just to let you all know what it is, if there's anything. Like I said, you can go to section E or policy E and there's a lot in there, but this is um, we went through all of them today. This is just in addition to what's already there to include. So that's it. So if you have any questions or suggestions, you can email them to myself or to Beth and we will work through those.
I just add a little additional context. Um, Dawn has been great. She's been working with Connolly, our bus company, um to explore the possibility of putting cameras on our buses. First, to deter bad choices that might be made on buses, especially with our younger friends. Um, and secondly, when there is an incident, um to provide an opportunity for our administrators to investigate in a much more efficient process as opposed to losing an entire day and doing hits on the bus. So um, it seems like the administration is in support of it. Connolly is in support of it. Many other districts have done it and we would just need this policy changed in order to begin piloting it and then installing cameras on all the buses.
Sounds great.
Does, does the policy have like a um discoverable period? Videotaping is only good for such amount of time and then it was destroyed.
That's a great question. So when this policy was um approved two years ago initially, there is a protocol that goes with it that says that the material is available for sixty days. Um, and that it's only to be accessed by the superintendent or their designee, which would likely be the building principal or assistant principal. And we do not share it with the police unless it falls under our M L U memorandum of understanding with them as if there's concern about a crime or something.
And then at the end of sixty days, it's deleted, yeah, okay.
Is it just the one, just one camera on the, in front of the bus or is it?
Like like two, right?
Yeah, we're gonna pilot two. Uh, some districts do three or do four. Actually, you do, the more you have, the more it costs. So we're gonna pilot two and just sort of see the views that gives us. Um, it'll, it'll be also for um, you know, just things that happen around the front of the bus. So it, it serves multiple purposes.
Does Connolly have access to the camera?
No. It's um, it's actually all in a little disk. So it, it's, it's not in the cloud or anything. So when we would want to do an investigation, they'd have to pull the little disk out of the camera of the bus.
And then go to the principal or assistant principal.
So it's a physical hard drive on the bus?
Yes, exactly. And with regards to Kevin's question about, that, that is a procedure. That won't be in our policy, by the way.
But I'm happy to share that for the second read.
That's a procedural part. Um, we're, we're trying to take the procedures out of our policy. Because if not, if a procedure changes, then I have to get all the committees together and change it all. And it's a lot. It's kind of like a legislative process that we really don't need to do.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Um, how many buses are part of the pilot?
Uh, just four.
Four and have you?
But we can quickly roll it out, but yeah, we wanted to do four, just to get a feel of it. Um, and see how many cameras before we move forward with all nineteen buses.
Is there like a random, like would parents get a, a note or an email about it?
Once they're um on the four pilot buses, uh it will be communicated out to those. Well, actually, there has to be a sign in the bus, but it'll also be communicated to those four buses that we're piloting. Two in Dover and two in Sherburne.
Are you picking the four based on activities within the bus that have ever, okay, I figured.
The building um principals recommend it.
Right, or ties.
Yeah, where they, where it would be helpful to have sooner or later.
I can guess, but I won't.
Well, there you go. All right, well, thank you, Dawn, for spearheading the logistics of this. So then we'll talk to you about procedures. Just kidding. Okay, so next. Borrow those from others. Yeah. Next, we have the draft of the high school twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven program studies.
Well, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, for this year's proposed, or you can start for next school year, proposed program of studies, the, the changes are actually pretty minor. Um, each year, we do, in the early fall, uh take a look at conversations that may come up during a, a a meeting that we have that's called academic standards, where sometimes we add and delete courses or we tweak things. Uh, sometimes it might come up as it pertains to something that guidance is noticing, a trend or something of that sort. Or if it's just something that uh has been brought forward to my attention that is no longer valid or um in some cases, it's um language that needs to be adjusted based upon what our attorneys are recommending. So, that being said, um, I just highlighted a couple of quick things. We've added some generative A I guidelines because as you know, A I is everywhere. Um, and our faculty, um, or the entire district actually just had some excellent opportunities at our full P D day to continue learning more about A I, which was, which was really well received. We have a interdisciplinary course at the high school called Intersections. And we added some language that just talked about how we would enroll for that course if we had more numbers than we could support. Uh, right now, we have one section of it. There's a potential that we could add a section to it. Some of that would impact some staffing that we could move around. But we did want to put into uh the program of studies for next year, the idea that it would be a lottery system, fair and, and uh telegraphed lottery system for students to get in. It's juniors and seniors. You could take it at both the college prep and the honors level. So it really is a wide open uh course for a class, which is great. Um, we are adding a guitar three class. It's not really an addition. Guitar three students will be incorporated into the guitar two class. We already do that now with TV media and we also do it with some of our art and engineering courses where there's a cohort of kids who are ready for the next level and the teachers differentiate their projects and their learning so that they can continue on with it. Uh, guitar has become incredibly popular in the high school, which is great. Uh, maybe it has something to do with obviously just the growth of our music program or maybe it has something to do with social media and television and reality shows. It's like uh everyone does want to play the guitar. Um, we have also made a couple tweaks to our A P computer science principles just in terms of the actual coding languages that we will be using. Um, I'm really happy to report that we're seeing really unbelievable uh students engaged and enrolled in these courses. They just presented um as part of the A P course, some of their um learnings for the full faculty. They actually took some time to come during a day off and produce that, which was great. And then after that, really, it's just a few um changes with multilingual learners, changing it from English as a second language to multilingual learners. And then giving them a pathway for the world language graduation requirement. Right now, it's a three-year requirement and sometimes for those kids, depending upon when they come into our system, they are not ready to necessarily take that language. And we also want to be able to give them credit for the fact that they already have another language. Uh, so it just is really opening up doors for those multilingual learners to have full access to our courses, but then also to meet the, the satisfaction of the graduation requirements. So I'd be happy to answer any of the questions, but those are um the major changes, which really are pretty minor.
Kevin, do you have a question?
No.
No. Anybody have a question for Mr. Smith? It looks good.
Exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting. Um, my, my son does the computer science. He likes it very much. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so finally, we have um policy, another policy, I K F. We haven't gotten to I yet. That's next on our agenda, the policy subcommittee meetings. Um, but this is about our graduation requirements and the fact that we need to um kind of memorialize what it is. So do you want to, do you want to discuss it?
Sure, and I'm happy to, you know, Mr. Smith, please, Phil here to jump in or Mr. Conklin. Um, so for those of you who were on the committee last year, um last spring, we talked about um our graduation requirements in that um Dover Sherburne has an expectation that students um have one hundred and forty credits before graduation. Um, living with a senior, I well know that there's four years of English, four years of math, three years of science, three years of social studies, including world and U S history. Um, and then there are educational technologies in the arts and P E and health requirements that are very spelled out in program of studies and in our graduation policy. As our graduation policy currently um reads, which is I K F, in addition to Dover Sherburne's graduation requirements, all students according to current Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidelines must pass M C A S exams. And then um it goes on to explain that there's credit for study abroad and there's also a requirement for forty hours of community service. Um, current Department of Elementary and Secondary Education no longer, no longer requires the M C A S. As you know, that, that went to the ballots in November of twenty-four. Um, and the state of Massachusetts voters voted to remove that as a requirement for the state graduation. Um, it is still in our um policy. So as we start to look at section I, um as part of our manual review, I wanted to put it forth because every district is looking at this. Um, as you know, we've already passed our competency determination, which is what Dover Sherburne students be expected to do in order to meet the graduation requirements for the state, which is taking the two years of English, the two years of math, the two years of lab science, and the one year of U S history. That's minimal. The state requirements are minimal. Um, and as I just stated, uh Dover Sherburne requirements are far more rigorous in terms of the courses that students have to take, the number of those courses and even within those courses, the curricular standards and the rigor is beyond um what is expected at the state level. So I know, Mr. Smith, you and Mr. Amara last year provided lots of um talking points around the thoughts of the high school administration and department chairs. I don't know if you want to share?
Yes, certainly, certainly. So, you know, I, I clearly support us having high standards and maintaining rigor. And I'll, and I'll talk a little bit about how I think that can still take place um in lieu of, of not having an M C A S. So the M C A S test, which is typically given to grade nine students in the spring for their fall, I mean, for their science course, usually it's biology, and then grade ten math and E L A they'll take. Um, a lot of time, instructional time is lost just in terms of testing itself, the, the choreograph of the testing. Uh, we went from paper to computer-based. And while in some ways it's more efficient, I think it's put a much greater burden on our technology department and making sure that all these systems are working. Um, you know, it's all hands on deck when we're on M C A S, um, which is really, I think, somewhat unfortunate because I think then there's other things that we could in fact be doing. Um, the department heads are, are pretty unified, as am I, in that I think it's a baseline examination that doesn't necessarily provide high standards of rigor to prove that our kids are college and career ready. Rather, it's a little bit of a prefunctory uh test that takes place in grade ten uh to showcase that, you know, students have achieved an acceptable level. The grade ten test itself is an easier test than the grade eight test. Uh, so when you look at state results and all of that, it, it will vary anyways. Our students have done incredibly well just this past year. When even we were in flux and we told students it still does count, our kids did very, very well. Um, would I have concerns because they would still take the test, that they wouldn't take it quite as seriously? I, you know, there's always some potential for some dip, but our kids are pretty well geared towards doing well and being successful. So I think it's really around how we frame it. Um, interesting enough, recently, the state has put out some Governor Healy's um plans for some potential capstones portfolio as well as end of course examinations. I think that's more on target for really what we should be looking at. We're looking at a portrait of graduate where we're looking at more of capstone type of opportunities that at the end of grade twelve, their K to twelve experience should really indicate that more so than they took a grade ten test that really is algebra and geometry based and that's it, when ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of our kids are going on to calculus, A B calculus, B C calculus, statistics, uh and so forth. So um it would be our recommendation that we look at a different way in which we can ensure um that our rigor, high rigor is maintained and that our students are ready. And I think these end of course requirements, I think perhaps using state models or and or our own end of course examinations and capstones would be the best way to go.
When you look at other towns, this has been a, a hot topic of conversation among superintendents for over the, you know, last year since last November. Um, when you look at all of our comparables, um Westwood, Holliston, Norton, Weston, Medway, Mansfield, King Philip, Wellesley, Walden, Walthall, Canton, Hopkinton, and Millis have all taken it out of their local graduation requirements and are set are moving towards the more rigorous course-specific portfolios and, and coursework. Um, the only one that maintained it was Needham. You know, I think the, the reason that we brought this up is because while the state of Massachusetts voted down M C A S, um fifty-nine percent of Massachusetts citizens voted to take it out as a graduation requirement. Both Dover and Sherburne, the majority of citizens here voted to maintain it as a state requirement. That said, you know, I, as an educator and a leader, feel strongly that I don't think voters fully understood uh what was at stake and um kind of the pros and cons of maintaining it as a state graduation requirement. I think that the commercials were misleading. And I think um there would have to be a lot of education if we were going to go out and ask the community for their input, just to make sure they truly understand all of the pros, all of the cons, and are able to make an educated decision. But I know that when we brought this up in the past, it was a concern of the committee to get stakeholder feedback before you move forward with a um policy. So we wanted to bring it up again to see kind of what your expectations are. Um, you know, as you're going to be faced with changing or not changing policy I in the near future.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, yes, I, I actually think it is a different question at the state level versus local level. Because I think there is a state standard that people are potentially voting for to ensure that, you know, no schools are sort of left behind or able to sort of continue to push kids forward even though they're not getting the, the learning that they should. I don't think that we necessarily have that concern. I think the programs we have, obviously based on the level of years of English and math that you have to have here is well beyond the, the standards. Um, so I definitely kind of agree that it's, that purpose kind of is a moot point with the way we are already operating. Um, I do think there are times where having the M C A S is, is good sort of uh practice for other high-stake tests because our, most of our students are still going to be taking high stakes tests as they, as they go forward. So I think that, that is helpful. Um, I agree, it takes a lot of time out of the day, so it could be used better for, for instruction. Question I had on this time spent on M C A S preparation. So if it's no longer going to be a uh, a requirement, they're all still gonna sit for it. Are we still going to spend this time because it will still end up being a public metric that we're worried we're gonna have bad scores if we're not specifically taking all of these hours out of the day? Or do we not, or are we talking about removing sitting for the test?
Sitting for the test is still going to be a requirement. So, and you raise an excellent point, in fact, in the spring category is an excellent point too, talking about the two, the towns, they voted for this, so we really do need to. And I completely respect that. I think we need to show, if it's the will of the committee to move to a different platform, to show what's that going to be, to ensure the community understands where the rigor is still going to be and the expectations. I do agree that the MCAS does provide us with a data point. You know, we're using a lot of data in our analysis of students and it's a decent one to use. The difficulty is, the rationale for why the test itself was first established was really to kind of raise the bar in some places and to ensure that those communities would also appropriately fund. And I think that's where it has fallen short in some communities. I do think that that is the question, like how much extra time? Because I've talked to my department heads and I've said, okay, if that's not the case, how will we ensure that our kids are still going to do well? And it's because we go above and beyond what those standards are anyways. And it really is, you know, we're really focused on our student-centered type of learning. And instead of it being an end of a unit where teachers are simply providing some late, last-minute instruction on a particular, you know, on genetics, that the students would actually be able to incorporate labs and actual hands-on opportunities to be learning that really at a much higher level. So I'm also confident that we're going to still cover all of that, but it's going to be in a much more interactive, student-centered way rather than just, you know, kind of giving them the information at the end because it is a little bit of a mad dash. I'll give you an example, in science, one of the things that we looked at the results of one particular area, you know, and our science kids did just amazing and our teachers did a wonderful job. There was one area where we were, instead of being 30, 40% higher than the state, we were only about six or eight. And we also did some research on that and come to find out the whole state was much lower too. So the question, but our department head has already changed the alignment of that type of material and when it's presented. And he's actually presented a plan to me of how they're going to thread it all through instead of it being something that they do right near the end. So we can still take positives from MCAS in terms of some of the data. But you're right, we're going to also have to ensure that what's being tested, students are prepared for, and I feel that we will be.
But the difference now is that before we had the responsibility to make sure that the kids are learning to do well on the test because they're not going to graduate without.
Right.
And now, if we remove it, then while we still want them to do well, it's not, the same responsibility isn't there anymore.
I think my concern is more around our kids that don't, our, the majority of our students do very well on the MCAS, but we do have students that don't pass it. We spend a lot of time working with them independently, giving them extra help, recommending tutoring for kids that just might not be good test takers. And they will still pass the course and do very well and show through all the exams and the projects in the course that they understand the material, but it's just this one test that is hard for them. And I think that it's hard for students to have to know that, like, they are the ones that their teachers are focusing all this extra time and attention on just because they might not be good standardized test takers.
Or their first language is in English or they have a disability. So they spend a lot of time in addition to struggling with their regular schoolwork to then have to focus on how to take the specific test. You know, to your question and to support Mr. Smith's point, the hours here aren't the hours of covering the standards. And I think even yesterday, I was with the middle school science team and they're moving from having earth science, biology, and physics, physical science, you know, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade to a more integrated model. So it spirals every year in each of those. And they're deciding where to put things. They were looking at MCAS data to help them decide what needs to go where and how to make sure that the kids are prepared for that eighth grade test because they don't take it until eighth grade. And the same thing happens with English, science, and math at the high school. I think, you know, our English department was number one in the state for MCAS scores this year because they are so careful and thoughtful about the information that they get. And it's really about what standards to cover and when to cover them and in what depth versus the hours here, which is like, we're going to sit down and do practice tests so that you know how to do them when it's in front of you. That time can be used in a different way.
To Denny's point too, that the environment's a little bit different. So let's say you're in a geometry class and you're taking this geometry course and you're taking a unit test. You're probably taking a unit test in a classroom of about 15 to 18 kids. When you're doing the MCAS, you're certainly taking it in a full classroom because we're also conducting school at the same time. Like, we don't stop school for our other three grades. And we're moving those 25 to 27 kids into rooms. And then at a certain point in the day, we say, for those who are going to need extra time, we're moving you now to this room. And so it's kind of disruptive. We don't have another choice because we also have a responsibility to educate the other three grades in the school during that day, and we try to shift. So, you know, yes, we would still sit for that, but I think for some of our kids, the anxiety that is created just with that alone and like separate setting, it's literally a puzzle. When we do separate setting in a small school like ours, I cannot even imagine what large schools do. So we're very fortunate. But it's a huge puzzle of where we're going to put kids and when, and how many people can be in front of them where, you know, studies have shown if you're taking that examination with your teacher of record, you're much more apt to be at ease, you can ask them questions. You know, here with the MCAS, the other thing is, you're not able to, you know, you really can't. In some cases, we have a proctor who is just reading from a book.
So one thing, because I've been doing policy and poor Beth amused me today and went through some policy stuff. The policy part of me thinks, okay, so the state said no. We, it's not, you know, like a requirement, it was voted down. But then if we have it as a graduation requirement, my concern is this, is then we do have students who opt out of taking the MCAS. I mean, we've had that happen. So then what do we do when we're at graduation time? We're sorry, you didn't take it, but the state said I don't have to. So now we have these two conflicting things. I don't know how this litigates out, is what I'm saying. And the lawyer in me, that really, I don't know. I mean, like, when I do the policy, I work with the MAS D rep and she's like, it all has to align with the legislate. So now we're going against a state recommendation, so what happens? I mean, that's my thing.
But don't we already go against it? Because we already require kids to take more English, more math than the state would require. And so they could technically go get a GED somewhere with the requirements.
Well, they could, they could.
Which they still could. So like, I guess we're already in, we're not following the Massachusetts rule. We're making it harder to graduate Dover Sherburne than any Massachusetts requirement, I think.
Well, I mean, I think that's true to a point, but I think that's just because we've upped the level. I don't know if when we've said, I mean, some of these parents who don't opt for their children to take it, they're not saying to our kids, you don't have to take these, I mean, they will pull their kid out. So I think this one test could be a turning point.
Jeff, to your point, we've had a couple of situations over the last 10 years where people have opted out. And so we've worked with those families because then essentially that student receives a certificate of completion. And they've then worked with a college of their choice, usually it's a private school, and they have kind of worked through something to ensure that that, you know, so we still help support them because I don't want to have this kid be left, you know, after doing all everything. It's not the kid's fault. And frankly, it's not the parent's fault, it's just a choice that they're making and they legally can do so. So we've continued to do that and we've had kids who continued on with undergraduate work out of the schools. It certainly adds a different layer and we have to do a lot more communication. Whereas the standard is, when they see the transcript, they have to fill it and that includes they pass the MCAS.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess my overall concern is really just how much of this we will actually change versus semantics. Like, we remove the requirement. But if the first year that Dover Sherburne is bad on the MCAS, you're going to have every parent in town coming, like, what did you guys do? And so there's, how much prep should we still be doing for a test that, the scores will be out there?
Yeah.
But whether that's the best assessment of the student's ability is probably not at that point if we've sort of pared back the additional, additional training that we've been doing for it. So I like that we'd be able to add all these hours back into productive time and not just like test-taking. Or put that towards practicing for SAT or something else that actually might move the needle in a different direction. So I just worry those are the two outcomes. We ultimately end up still doing all this practice to make sure that we get good grades. We remove all this practice and we actually drop down and everybody's worried. So.
It's valid, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, I haven't kept up with it, but is it, is this being repurposed as a requirement on the state level, like dead on arrival? And so that's why the Healy administration's looking for an alternative for graduation requirement?
Yes, so I think.
Can we find ourselves back in the same spot in two years? This might be another thing.
Potentially, right? So right now, they're talking about these end-of-course exams where at the end of, you know, sophomore year English, the end of sophomore year chemistry, you're going to have to take an exam. So it's going to look like New York State does with a regent's for some extent. What the state is defining it as, and I wrote it down somewhere, it's high accountability, not high stakes or high, or something like that. But there are, if you go online, there's a lot of pros and cons against that too. The difference, I think, is MCAS, you had to reach a certain score in order to pass, right? With these end-of-year, end-of-course exams where they are right now, it's not like pass or fail, you have to pass it. It's going to be, that is going to be a portion of the requirement in addition to the coursework that you do with your teacher in the classroom. So it's not like a high stakes test, it's just going to be part of your whole package and together that has to equal a certain amount of.
So they're cobbling together what that would look like for Massachusetts?
Exactly. And we, they're theoretically going to have a proposal in June of '26, theoretically, and then they'll roll it out in the next two to three years. I think, as I mentioned before, I think the unfortunate part of all this is that, you know, citizens, which they've every right to do, brought forth petition to the state to put this on the ballot. It wasn't explained well to the voters. And the Department of Education ended up with an outcome that they did not expect and did not have planned before. And so therefore, we're scrambling to figure out what's best. And we're not there yet. So we have our local competency determination in place, which is the best of Dover Sherburne, right? Because you have to pass our courses, which are rigorous. So the state should be thanking us for raising the bar for them. And it's just a matter of, I don't know if MCAS are going to be here forever and the end-of-course assessments, or if MCAS will be for the lower grades and then maybe the end-of-course assessments of the upper grades, we don't know.
I am hearing a lot of discussion about creating a regent's type of process.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you don't want to be the last one hanging on to something that's anachronism, you know?
Right, right. But I think Jeff hit the nail on the head, right? It's a philosophical decision. Because philosophically, the way that our district has gone through the strategic planning process, which is not just two people or four people sitting in a vacuum making up a plan. I mean, this has been input from everybody. It's like, we want relevant learning, hands-on learning, authentic learning that lasts beyond a test. If that's the case, then we should move away from them. On the other hand, Lord knows that when we're not ranked number one in Boston Magazine, there's a backlash, yes.
So when, like, when Denny presents, sorry for interrupting.
No, it's okay.
So like, when Denny presents, I remember was like, 10% partially meet standards and then like, single digits meet standards. And in a small denominator school, that's probably, what, 10 to 12 students in general? We're talking about who could be affected in a given class?
In Jersey, it's not passing.
Yeah, because if you.
It's seven, it's a handful.
We literally, it's literally in a given year of students at the high school, grade 10, not passing is usually one or two students.
So when people have a partially meet standards, that would be someone you would expect to pass the 10th grade MCAS level?
Partially meets is passing.
Is passing.
Okay.
It's only, does not, does not.
I guess I'm a glass half-empty person.
Yeah, no, the expectation, it's really the does-not-meet expectation is a.
So we're talking, yes, gotcha.
Kevin, to your point, the partially meets, that we don't end with that and just say, okay, all done. Like, we still will focus in on the needs of that student, looking at that data and what courses they're taking, but they don't have to take any more MCAS exams. But we do carefully really see where are those shortages, where are those gaps, and how can we fill those in by the time they leave here as seniors, that we've closed that gap.
Great, yeah, I believe that. I was going to say, yeah, because this was my, came back to boy, because it, when you're playing with small denominators, it just takes a few people to be like, nah. And then you end up in the, you drop it, right? If you have 5,000 students and 10 people are like, we're going to tank it, no big deal.
We've honestly had years where it's been out of, not a district student.
Yeah.
Okay? And there are students, yet I, as a building principal, I've always felt as though the state does not treat us properly because we don't control the testing standards that take place in that school. So it's not as though I can say, when that happens with that student who is outplaced but is a Dover Sherburne district kid, they, we should ensure that the right testing environment is being handled. We have no say over that. It's a weird place.
Yes.
It's a weird place.
And Kevin, I think one of the points that you brought up in the spring too was really well-made, which is around, you know, if students are going to go to highly competitive colleges, right? They're now moving back towards requiring SATs or ACTs. If they're going to go into medicine or law, there's going to be high-stakes, standardized time tests, right? So is this a practice for that? And it puts some thought into this and feel free to push back if you feel otherwise. But, you know, thanks to John's leadership and the teachers and the guidance counselors, we're now at to 77% of our high school kids take at least one AP class before they graduate. And so that's only 23% that don't. And, you know, that might be the students who are struggling because, you know, for whatever reason. So I think students are having to practice standardized tests and preparing for those high stakes things through that process. You know, and even though SATs and ACTs haven't been required, we've still had, you know, a large portion of our kids taking them and practicing them more than once. So I do think just to that point, they do have opportunities to practice for those tests. And the kids who are going to go on perhaps to study medicine or law, you know, are probably in multiple of those AP classes or having that practice that way. So I just wanted to leave you of that one concern. The philosophical one, I still don't have the right answer to.
Do you have an idea, students, like, because like, fair and appropriate, right? Where like, do we have, how many people go to vocations or military afterwards and does that affect them?
Does what affect them?
Not having an MCAS. Like, I know the military, they have, they're doing a different exam, but like, vocations, unions?
Yeah.
Do they, have they?
We have never had, like, we have always had every student has passed in 14 years. But maybe not that first time, but they took it the second time and they have. We've never had a student leave here not having passed the MCAS.
Okay.
And we now have population, some of our new programs in districts have students staying in districts that might not pass the MCAS.
That's correct.
That aren't yet.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
But they're coming. So there might be a shift there.
It could be, yeah.
So the point of bringing it up tonight is just to say, you know, anticipation, in anticipation of having to look at this policy as part of the policy review. If there's any data that you want us to be collecting, you could let us know so that we can start that process and get that going for you so that you can make an educated decision.
And if you have nothing to do on Friday at 9:30 a.m., the policy committee will be meeting for two hours, maybe three.
I just think it's a generic statement. It's an easier decision when you have a little more guidance from the administration as to what the alternate's going to look like, or you don't want to hang on to something that's antiquated.
Well, we're not going to get that from the state yet and, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, speaking for myself, I think the spending more time on constructive work makes more sense than continuing to practice for a test. But I'd worry about the alternative. And I actually imagine most of our students will still do well just based on the coursework that they've had. They might, might just not be the most top-of-mind topic when they go to take it because we didn't like perfectly tailor the curriculum to align with it, which we have in the past.
Well, and to that point, we will have to also ensure that our students are well-prepared for it because they still will have eligibility for the Adams and Culplick, for the Adams opportunities to attend a state school. So still, that's a responsibility we have. So it's not as though they're not going to see MCAS-type questions anymore. It's just, I think, the flow of how the curriculum will move throughout the year. You know, they're done in the spring, which I know is probably never a good time. But that's, that's a real struggle. And then literally, science is done a week before final exams. It's just a terrible time and kids are, they're tired. You know, they're like, after this, I have to take another exam that's probably a lot harder.
And with that being said too, I know as a parent who has had a child who's gone through and did very well on the AP exams, I mean, I feel like that's a really good barometer on preparedness. And the fact that we start later than a lot of the southern schools in the AP exam date is the same across the country. So that's it. So the fact that our students do so well on that exam with, you know, a little bit less time to get the information out is really a testament to the fact that they are taught. is really a testament to the fact that they are taught how to take tests and to get the knowledge out very well. I mean, that's just, you know, my perspective on it.
Yeah, and, and we have great kids.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I don't, I think, you know, giving the MCAS, I, I, the kids here are high achieving. I mean, call it what you want, they, they want to do well. So I, I don't think people are just going to shirk the responsibility when we give them a test to say, you know, if it matters or not. That's just my opinion, just because they do so much better than they need to.
We always ensure, you know, we, we, we do our very best, because we have such great kids, we always do our very best. Even when we're taking surveys, we talk to the kids about how important surveys are and the information and to, to take the time that is necessary because this can help us, help you and help your peers. Our kids respond to that. It's, it's amazing. Like, we'll say that, you know, it's going to probably take you thirty minutes. And I hear from some of my colleagues, oh, they finished in five or ten. I said, our kids took the full thirty minutes because they wanted to answer the survey properly. You know, and we've all, I'll survey for sure, but um I just think that just, it's the caliber of students.
Well, if you have any other questions or concerns, direct those to Beth or Denny and then they can get answers to us as well.
Right, or if there's data you want us to collect or conversations you want us to have, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, any more data points you need, just let them know.
Yeah, there's that. Thank you for everything you have put together. I think the data that we have in front is, is useful. I just, I don't have a perfect solution for murky problems.
Well, clearly neither does the state, so there you go. So.
And you can always revisit the policy, you know, if something happens, if you take the, you know, requirement away and for all of a sudden, you know, our kids take it less seriously, then you can put it back in.
That's right, we can just meet on Friday morning. So I'm just joking, trying to plug that. Okay, so with that being said, we'll go on to superintendent comments.
Okay, and if it's okay with you, I'm going to pass the baton to Mr. Paul to begin. For those of you who haven't met him in three D, this is a three D, which you can usually see on screen in two dimensions. But he is going to present tonight about some of what he's been doing over the last year and a half in his new role with some of our high school educators around piloting um one-to-one at the high school.
Yeah, so um we, one of the first things when I was interviewed in May, when I interviewed in May of twenty twenty-four was looking at sort of long-term pilot programs that we could participate in or ways that we could balance our learning and our technology and our, our outlay of, of our finances. And it all kind of came together with um the need to look at what we've got for a replacement plan right now in, in place. So uh in looking at that, um, you know, starting really in July of twenty twenty-four, uh, when I first started here, it was, you know, researching in district practices, talking to people, meeting with teachers and um trying to get a sense and a handle from the tech department, uh, what past practices had looked like. Um, and then as the school year started identifying staff needs with my entry plan, uh, meeting with um departments individually at PLC meetings and then meeting in full faculty meetings. Uh, by January of this year, we convened a one-to-one committee for the high school. We had a representative from each department, uh, except for the math department, that was the only group we couldn't grab somebody from. Outside of that, we had really good representation of our faculty. We had four meetings and one site visit. Uh, so we had four meetings where we broke up into subcommittees and we did some homework on the outside and brought those, those pieces back and reported back. And then recently presented our findings to the faculty, uh, and we come here with some recommended actions. So that's the, the overview of what that timeline has looked like. Uh, as far as the, the research and engagement went, uh, the initial research were putting together subcommittees of uh, teaching and learning and infrastructure. Uh, the teaching and learning committees were the teachers that were on the committee, looking at it from a teacher perspective, looking at it from a student perspective, and then the tech department getting together, my team getting together and looking at what would change, what would need to change if um something, you know, if we added more devices to our, uh, our infrastructure. We collected data, um, and the things that we focused on were equity, device management, teacher readiness. We did a site visit to Newton North High School to observe uh real-world application. We also had some teachers come here and look at the middle school and their current successful one-to-one model that they have here. Um, and we wanted to look at accessibility and management and support. Um, and then the, we finally, we came to a recommendation a, after a final review. The uh conversation really came about over the last eighteen months because the high school has a bring-your-own-device program. Um, and I think John could probably speak better to the way that that program sort of initially was developed, but I think it was more kind of out of necessity during COVID.
Yes, yeah, a lot of new apps, a lot of new, um, you know, virtual learning. So it was a huge learning curve for some of our educators, it was a learning curve for some of our students. But it definitely came out at that point where we knew that we needed to ensure that kids still received instruction, yet we weren't able to be in person.
Right. And in looking at this, uh, going forward, the two pieces that are on the horizon, one, uh, of course, is adapting the future needs with AI. And um the other is a potential cell phone bill in the legislature, uh, that seems to be kind of hung up um and kind of bouncing back and forth between the two houses, and they're having fun with that, um, as we all are in dealing with cell phones in schools. So our committee, Joseph Cattolifano, Rick Grady, Alyssa Healy, Kristi Longich, uh, Tim Omara, Mike Sweetie, Denny Conklin, myself. Um, and then we had guidance from the Department of Education, uh, elementary and secondary education from the Office of EdTech. Uh, I became part of a peer learning cohort uh for the past two years with the Assistant Director of EdTech, A.J. Kote. Um, A.J. came and did a site visit as well. Um, so again, studying the feasibility and how would this enhance teaching and learning? Um, the current reality is that we have issues with our BYOD system. The ma, the BYOD model places the burden on families to provide technology. A number of students require loaner devices for the year and the existing fleet of Chromebooks at the elementary schools and high school date back to twenty nineteen. We're starting to find some unfortunate failures of those devices and not through student misuse. But the, the devices themselves are aging out very quickly. Um, and we're starting to see the kinds of things that are concerning for technology people for safety purposes. In the people that we had interviewed, in the people that we had spoken with, uh, in the site visit that A.J. did, the, the biggest thing that came about was that a one-to-one program is the most equitable solution. It creates equity and access and eliminates instances of students being singled out. Classroom management, teachers from across all levels desire better control, less distraction from a variety of personal devices. Uh, and then assessment integrity, uniform devices are seen as critical for assessment integrity, enables lockdown browsers and preventing unauthorized access. As we sit here right now, all of us are sitting on different devices. Not a single one of us has the same device, right? Poor Kevin's sitting there with a cell phone. Every time I look over, I feel so bad that I'm looking at the tiny screen. But now imagine you put yourself in the, in the shoes of our students, you're a fourteen, eighteen-year-old. You look around the room and you're trying to complete your work on whatever device it is. We have students that are borrowing our old Chromebooks from twenty nineteen. Um, and I see them, I've seen kids in the library put the Chromebook aside and then work on the phone. And now they're writing a paper on their phone. This is a reality. This isn't just like, you know, I saw this thing happen one time. This is, you see it over and over and over again. And it's unfortunate that those kids are being put in a position um because of the, the BYOD program that exists currently.
And next year, there will be no cell phones.
And next year, there will be no cell phones, according to state legislature. You're so right. So we looked at, uh, as far as planning and legal requirements from DESI, this is all information from DESI in the Office of EdTech. Generally speaking, uh, technology should be an extension of existing plans for improving learning and teaching, not the starting point. Uh, so we always look at it as how can technology enhance the, the teaching and learning, not uh shoehorning a tool in place. The DESI recommends piloting um at a specific grade level or subject before committing school-wide. Uh, and then there's the legal obligation, of course, uh, to provide every student with a device if one is required for learning and instruction. If we're putting things on Google Classroom in every class, the students need to have a device. We need to provide a device for students who can't afford to have one. As far as equity and fees are concerned, um, some districts provide devices and then charge fees for damage. That, I go back and forth on that. It, it really requires you being on top of, on top of your, your fleet. It keeps the fleet in good shape, uh, but then it's, you know, do we hold the kid out from a particular activity because they lost their charger? And that, that balancing act that, that, that has to happen. And then device, device variety, schools, um, having different kinds of devices for students must ensure that all students have equitable access to learning regardless of device capabilities. We do have some classes at the high school right now that have specialized devices. They're using MacBook Pros in our technology and engineering classes because of the quality of the programs that are on those devices. They, they need specialized devices and we've talked with teachers that there are going to be pockets of classes here and there that would need a specialized device that even a one-to-one program wouldn't be able to provide for. And we'd have to handle that in, in each situation.
So in those cases, there are very special um devices that stay in that classroom that anybody who signs up for that class uses during that class period so they have access to that specialized equipment.
Correct. I had a, a meeting with a teacher this morning, um, that essentially he said, if there were four or five or six of these particular device in my classroom, if the student group work would continue, there would be absolutely no difference between what we're doing now and, um, and next year. For the students, the only difference is that the school had on the device, it wouldn't be five kids piling onto whoever had the best back book. As far as sustainability goes, uh, the districts, generally speaking, try to lease with multi-year procurement models to sustain the infrastructure over time. And, you know, really that, that benefit is teachers can plan the instruction because they can count on the devices. They know what they have in front of them. When our, our world language teachers use Extemberay, which is a program for recording um speaking and listening projects, uh, right now, it usually takes a member of the technology team to be in there with them while they participate in that activity because our kids are coming in with all sorts of different devices. If we were looking at this as our classroom, it looks like this. And I may have, I know I do with my own children, I have um settings on my computer that my kids can't access. So if one of them is the microphone and the thing is to record, the lesson is to record, now we're trying to reach mom and dad in the middle of class so that you can record. Meanwhile, the student next to me is borrowing a Chromebook from the school and another one has a Surface Pro and they're having no problems at all, right? So it's, it, it varies widely. Again, it can be difficult to fund on a large scale, uh, and it can be difficult to support with limited staff. So those are just the, you know, honest truths with it. Looking at comparable school districts, uh, current one-to-one Chromebook models in Lexington, Needham, Wayland, Westwood, using, uh, those are using Chromebooks right now, one-to-one MacBooks, uh, Concord Carlisle, a BYOD and a hybrid model where essentially they're giving them, giving Chromebooks to say like ninth and tenth graders and then letting eleventh and twelfth graders either continue to use the Chromebook or bring in their own device. That's happening at Lincoln Sudbury and Medfield. Uh, and then um the district's studying a one-to-one rollout, Wellesley and Weston. They're currently BYOD but are, are actively working on this. In fact, I'm the tech director, Adam, in Wellesley. He and I are both in the same cohort for this project. The phased map model is the recommended path, um, looking at yearly costs, um, you know, approximately twenty-six thousand dollars per year for four years. Um, and that would, you know, cover the student for the four years of high school. The phased rollout is the one that eliminates students from being singled out based on the device they have. We'd also be able to, in this situation, provide devices for our students, uh, in grades ten through, ten through twelve that don't have them. And uh we'd be able to provide a new one for them in part of this program. Some of the concepts that we looked at that were not selected, um, doing core subject carts. This would involve placing a hundred and twenty-five devices in five carts throughout the building. Costs twenty-two thousand dollars per year for the four-year lease, no one-time purchase of carts for six thousand dollars, uh, and then replacing those devices each year. That does not handle the equity piece, though, of students borrowing devices. Just letting our students borrow devices, uh, for the eighty or so students who are currently borrowing them. The year, the yearly cost for that would be about thirty-five thousand, I'm sorry, ten thousand. And then we would still have to also replace our MCAS devices that we're using for testing right now, which would be about another hundred and fifty. So we'd still be looking at about thirty-five thousand, um, even if we were just using them for MCAS and not actually giving them to the students. Uh, and then as far as the state testing is concerned, right now, um, MCAS is being used on a pro, uh, program called Cognia. In order to use Cognia in a BYOD model like Wellesley does, you have to get special permission from the state. You have to troubleshoot every single one of those hundred and fifty devices to make sure that that high-stakes exam is able to be completed. And it's not something I want to do. It, it's incredibly stressful for the kids, incredibly stressful for the parents, for the teachers, and even worse for the tech director and their technicians. The, the key staff and community concerns, I think John might be able to kind of highlight some of these things, things that they've seen in the high school going, you know, at, at least in the recent past.
Yeah, so one-ten-one A and B are um our computer science rooms, sometimes our AP computer science courses, uh, or um engineering courses, and they have MacBook Pros that, similar to what the superintendent said, that are locked and charged within that room, students access them for uh what they need to do within that classroom. They can obviously put things on the cloud, they can access other things at home, but they've got to have that same piece. So it does change kind of how we provide the um instruction. The daily use, um, the trick there is, yes, we do have some older Chromebooks that we do assign and the chargers, and we have a sign-out process, but it, it's, kids are coming down, they're stressed by, you know, I forgot it and I need to sign one out for the day, or the library doesn't have anymore. And we just feel like if a kid has something assigned to them, um, there's a much better opportunity for them using it. They have to obviously use the required to use the school-issued computers, which gives us a lot more safety and protection for them. The classroom control for the, the integrity piece as well. But in terms of the, the daily use, um, not every class uses them all the time, but every class at some point does use them for something. And the fact that we put lots of things on Google Classroom, so even if you're a student and you have a directed research study and you're in the library and you want to work on something, you need your computer to access documents and work.
As far as planning for support, um, things like teacher flexibility, um, it's not something that we would require teachers to completely change their teaching practice for. We're talking about integrating technology as people see fit, using the tools as people see fit. Teachers, when they're using them, would be able to use a product called ClassWise. Uh, the teacher sits in the front of the room or is in the room and can sort of virtually go around and see there are tiles on their screen. They can see where each kid is, uh, at any given moment and then click in and jump in, message the student, ask, see if they have any questions, redirect them, uh, pause all activity, they can push out links, um, lock down browser to do test, secure testing. We would be offering professional development to these teachers as a cohort so that they all start on the same pla, in the same place. The, uh, we do, like we said, but there are some specialized needs. We will make sure that those uh devices are in place for those people. And then as far as personal devices are concerned, the ninth graders would only be bringing their Chromebooks to school. And I have an eighth grader at home, um, she has a MacBook that she uses at home and she's got a Chromebook that she uses at school. When she comes home, a lot of times she does move over to that MacBook because she likes it, but she does not carry those two schoo, those two devices to school. Yeah, I couldn't get her to carry an extra water bottle with her. Um, she's definitely not carrying a second computer. The, the, the requirement of that goes, goes away pretty quickly. Like, the people that are looking at saying like, well, maybe I'll just bring my extra, they don't. It just doesn't happen.
I think one of the issues, too, with socializing MacBooks right now is that obviously anything that is on your phone can be on a MacBook. During the day texting each other and I, you know, you see them alternating between TES very quickly when a teacher or when I walk around. So I think that's an issue. Um, I think it's really nice that, you know, it's not going to be a huge change for a lot of our students because they're one-to-one on Chromebooks in eighth grade. So they don't know anything different. This is just what they've lived with. So all of a sudden saying you're going to have another Chromebook in ninth grade and that's going to continue, you're not really going to know what they're missing out on because it's the only thing they've known. Um, and I think we've had a lot of conversations about internet safety and whatnot. It's nice that if you're on a school Chromebook, even at home, all of those firewalls protections are still going to apply. So I think for a lot of parents and caregivers, it's nice to know, well, if my kid is on the school Chromebook at home. Um so I think for a lot of parents and caregivers, it's nice to know, well, if my kid is on the school Chromebook at home, I can kind of rest assure that they're actually doing their work and they can't get into um other things, so I think that's an added benefit as well.
Yeah, to your point, like the bell, the bell, law or whatever that's coming through, it's like a MacBook is the same as your phone, like so what would you do? You have the tech directors having to like install firewalls, like dirt, like you wouldn't be able to control it. Um our final recommendation was to formally recommend piloting a one-to-one model. Um beginning with grade nine in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year using fourteen-inch HP Fortis Chromebooks. Um they are what commercially you would refer to as Chromebook pluses. Uh in the education sphere, they don't call them Chromebook pluses, it's just the marketing thing, but uh it does have all of the same specs of the Chromebook Plus, which is an eight-gigabit uh hard drive, eight gigabit of memory and a hundred and twenty-eight gigabit uh hard drive in them. Uh the next steps would be proceeding to secure finalized pricing for the leased models. Um getting special funding from uh, I'm sorry, special pricing from HP so that uh we, because we've be buying in volume, um and then looking at things like accidental damage protection, um licensing from Google, um and the additional costs for adding licenses for client uh ClassWise, sorry. And we measure the success of the program, um dedicating time to getting feedback um from from uh staff and students, from um comparing results to the program here at the middle school. Uh and then um looking at other school districts and how their uh rollouts have gone.
And so the same idea, like the middle school right now, they got them in sixth grade, they've carried that same book for those three years, it would be the same thing, you get it in ninth grade, that's your device, you maintain it, you keep it safe for four years.
Correct.
Makes sense.
So something that you heard Brandon talk about multiple times is sustainability, and we're not talking necessarily about green sustainability in terms of the planet, we're talking about green sustainability in terms of money. So instead of buying, you know, four hundred and fifty Chromebooks for the middle school all at once um and paying, so having a huge spike in your budget one year and then nothing for three years, you lease it. So there's a small cost, a continuous predictable cost every year to maintain and recycle and get new Chromebooks as needed. Um so that will continue, you'll still have that cost, that yearly cost for the middle school Chromebooks. Next year, um with Dawn and Brandon's help, we're going to keep those Chromebooks an extra year so that we can pilot at the ninth grade level, so you won't have a cost next year to pilot. However, moving forward, you'll have to know that if we do decide to move this up through the high school, you're going to have that annual cost at the middle school and then you're going to have an annual cost at the high school. So there is going to be an added cost every year if beyond the pilot we decide to move forward with it.
So the eighth graders are going to just carry their current ones into ninth grade or getting?
No, the the eighth graders would be getting a new device. We would be uh instead of purchasing a new device for the sixth graders.
Swapping them.
Yes, we would send them out for um for rehab and refurbishment through our um accidental damage protection plan.
We're getting ready to go into our third lease for the quote that middle school one-to-one Chromebook, so the timing worked for it to and would you three-year leases on those? So we still have life in them. Um and so it it financially it would work to try the pilot without asking for additional money. I'm just concerned, I'll be honest, like taking that, it's not twenty-seven thousand five a year. You do it by four grades, it's times four.
Yeah, because it's an annual lease cost.
Annual lease, and there are additional costs with the Google Classroom, the um the ClassWise, all of that is also additional cost. That we already have, like in that elementaries are basically one-to-one, middle schools, one-to-one, so we have all those additional whatever, and you'll see me come forward almost every year asking for more software costs. It's all these costs that are adding up because of what we're putting on the devices and what it costs to just manage the devices in the classroom.
Are we able to negotiate those through the collective like we do for other things? Like the collaborative that we have, like so we get better buying power for this?
We do.
Yeah, the the um the mass higher education consortium is usually is that MHC contract a lot of the the Apple and HP products.
We get incredible pricing with HP.
So we're lucky to get one year with your support, if you support this, to try it. If it goes well, then we have to revisit the numbers and what that would mean over time forever, as long as we keep the program. If it doesn't go well, then we have new Chromebooks that can then be redistributed to the carts and to the kids who need to borrow them anyway, so we go back to plans B and C that we didn't choose.
I mean, I I look at it as, I actually don't know how we've been managing the high school with the sort of mismatch of everything that's happening when technology is such a central focus. Uh again, it's not in every class every day, but when it's used, the the safety, security, like ability for teachers to have that button to lock it down as needed, like makes total sense to me. It's expense, it's an expense, but it's, I think it's the expense of currently educating students in a technology-driven world. So, yeah.
Brandon did pilot what the, a cart system might look like. They're riding me of like when I first started teaching, where you have to sign out the cart for a period and then you have to find where it is and then get that cart to your classroom and it's it's.
Hope that the people before you charge, like shooters, plug me back in.
Oh, yeah, so it was like stepping back into time, you see the cart system.
But it's it's another level of responsibility, you started in sixth grade now and they're, I mean, I don't know if you've had a lot of issues with it, but um seems to be, I I have an eighth grader, so I've I've seen it, seems like it's working pretty well.
I just hate, sorry, go ahead. With, real quick, was it twenty-seven thousand four?
That's one, that's one year, the four-year of these costs for one grade.
Okay, not per student. No, no, no. That's why I was like, wait, I need to see that number again.
For a hundred and fifty students.
Right. The divi- we would be talking like about a hundred and twenty-seven dollars per student.
Oh, okay, yeah, so that is.
Times four, if the right, the cost of the device is like five.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, that is a competitive price per unit then.
I think we can get a better price than that. That's right now, that is the, if they gave me one to buy one, I'm buying it at that price without HP's special pricing. I know I can get a better price than that.
Because like they did a MacBook special and it was like thirteen hundred bucks for a MacBook. Nice. Anyway, and then.
These aren't MacBooks, though.
I know, I know, I'll give an example of like a competitor, because in the government it's a they have three bids for every project and thing. And then um just a question about technologies, so I'm an English teacher and I want an essay by the end of class that's X-long. Can they block AI programs in that individual class for that time period so then they have to write it by hand? Because I know they'll just put ChatGTP while, you know, tab.
Yep.
Do it.
So with uh ClassWise.
Yeah.
One of the features of ClassWise is focus mode. Uh in focus mode, they can send out just the assignment itself. So the link to Google Classroom, they can access that and then it goes over to the doc that they're writing on, and that is the only thing that will open on the device. They won't be able to open any apps that are built into the device, the camera, the spell chat, like any of the stuff that's like built-in products, anything that is would be assisting in the doc, like a spell check or a word count, that stuff's all fine, but just that one page is the only page you're getting you can't get anywhere else.
Right, so you can't write quickly.
No.
Dump it over and dump it back, yeah.
So to your point, you know, when the classrooms look like this.
They can do that. Yeah, they can do it currently.
And so what they're doing is either borrowing a classroom cart that they can control or the kids are literally going back to handwriting. Because that's all that teachers can control.
The teachers that have piloted the cart have had, I I have some feedback from them, I give them a survey. I give everybody for everything. Um the, I gave the survey to the staff that used it. Um they were very happy being able to push out the resources to the students, knowing that the students were only in those particular resources and they felt like the class ran smoother and quicker, there were less distractions.
Yeah, we have a cart at work and like half of them aren't plugged in correctly and it's nightmare fuel in the morning.
And then you have to, it takes ten minutes to log in, so you have ten minutes of writing time.
Yeah.
And you take that that burden away from the teachers and now they get to teach.
All right, so do we need to move forward on anything with this or we just, because we're just going to pilot going up, right?
Absolutely, and again, I think just a vote of go ahead and pilot.
Yeah, so.
Informally.
All in favor of starting a pilot program, so I can move forward. All four in favor that are here?
I agree, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um so the other part of the superintendent comments, I have a couple, a general comments and then talking about the professional growth study. Mr. Smith and Mr. Hall, you've read the professional growth study thirty times, you're welcome to stay, but I know you probably have a little bit of shopping to do on your sidewalks at home. Um so whatever you'd like. Um few general updates, um we continue on with negotiations. Thank you to Mary and Jeff um for being on that committee. Our next meeting is on December seventeenth. Um we've been working with our building principals on building budget meetings and you'll be hearing the results of the middle and high school budget meetings in a in a little bit with Dawn. Um we had parent safety meetings as promised for um do uh for Chickering, Pine Hill and for um the region, the regional one was on November eighteenth. We had um a wonderful dad in person and a few people online, I wish it was more attended, but uh we'll be sending out materials for people to follow up. Um congratulations to the cast and crew of Lovesick who completed their performance, um their drama performance a few weeks ago. Uh Wonka's coming to town, so mark your calendars, December eleventh through the thirteenth, to get a ticket to Wonka. Um always surprises.
Someone's going to be flying.
Exactly. I was like, do I say it or do I not say it? So thank you, Dawn. Um Jill Walsh, uh who is our professor from BU who talks a lot about social media safety, came um thanks to Challenge Success on November seventeenth. Um I was there, it was well-attended and she talked a lot about um bots and students interacting with bots online and what that does for kids' mental health and all of the the risks of that. Um so again, she's amazing and I believe we'll be sending out the link, which is protected just to DS people for anybody who wants to watch it. Definitely worth every minute of watching. Um and congratulations to all of our high school sports teams, we had, all of them did super well, um many of them made it into the final four. Um and so we're so proud of them and as of yesterday, we're already into the winter season, so off we go. Um and lastly, before I turn to the professional growth study, there'll be more to come in January, but I just want to um thank Denny. So as you know, your kids were home yesterday, we were at school with the teachers. Denny provided a professional day where teachers led workshops for each other about all of the practices and amazing things they're doing in their classrooms that tie back to the nine best practices. The number of workshops that ran with people doing it voluntarily, the breadth of topics um and and the quality of them, I did, I mean, every one, I popped into for like three minutes here, three minutes there, everyone was fascinating. And the feedback that we're getting from staff across the board was positive, so thank you, Denny, for making that happen. That was a super exciting day yesterday and hopefully more of those to come, whether they're on Fridays or Mondays or whatever moving forward. Um so the professional growth study, um what is this? Is that what we're using? Okay, so if you rewind to when Denny and I first took our offices, um we went on a strategic planning journey. Um one of the buckets that we looked at um was our professional growth of teachers. We saw the areas for growth were in terms of supporting teachers to grow and having people in place to do that, looking at a professional development and are there gaps in that, is there enough time for teachers to collaborate? Is the evaluation process meaningful where it's actually causing change for our educators to um grow in a in a um in a positive direction? And so the questions to be asked are what what resources do we need to support twenty-first century learning in all of our classrooms? Can we increase collaboration and planning time? And how do we expand opportunities for reflection through the profession, uh that through the feedback and evaluation process? So um one of our strategic initiatives is to examine the current leadership model to ensure adequate instructional support to achieve the district's vision for twenty-first century learning. So as you know, we have a five-year plan and we continue to chip away at these bullets from year to year, and this was the year where we're finally like, this is the one we're going for. So we did a study of our instructional leadership model. These are the um the people in the district who are in leadership positions in terms of teaching and learning, so you have Denny at the top. Um at the elementary level, you have our two principals who then work with their instructional coaches and their PLC leaders, which are grade-level leaders that kind of run the grade one team, grade two team, grade three team. Um at the secondary level, you have our two principals and assistant principals and they work with curriculum leaders at the middle school who work by department. There's the English curriculum leader, the math curriculum leader, who teach five full classes just like all of their peers and get a um modest stipend to do all of the leadership, run the meetings, order the, order the materials, um serve as a liaison to the administration. At the high school level, you have obviously Mr. Smith, who has department chairs for each of his disciplines. Those department chairs teach four classes instead of five, so they do have some release time and they also get a stipend to do some observations of their peers, help run meetings and organize professional development and those sorts of things. So is this the model that we need moving forward, was the question? Up in the corner is the cover of our um evaluation document. Do we need to change our evaluation model at all? So it's not just a check the box, get it done, but teachers are actually growing because of it. And then are our professional development opportunities actually helping teachers grow? Um and are motivated to change their practice, and that was just the caption from yesterday's day, so I think check Denny, yesterday's day was a great day. Um that is moving the needle. So we did a study, Denny and I have been talking about this, well, at least I have for nine years. Denny for four, it's like, this is never going to get done unless we get some help. So we had um Athena K-12, which is a consulting firm, come in to work with us. Their current and former superintendents and principals who totally understand this work, and he said, please help us figure out the answer about whether or not our model and our evaluation systems are working. So they did a three-pronged approach. They looked at Dover Sherburne focus groups, so they talked to all of our people and said, what's working, what's not? Part two was looking at a lit review, what does science and research and evidence say we should be doing? And then part three was looking at our comparable districts where the same districts we look at when we do negotiations about what are they doing? What can we learn from them to either do or not do? Um when you talk about our focus groups, which was the first prong, we had instructions about all those three things I just said, our instructional leadership model, our evaluation process and our PD. And then we had all of those constituents um in involved in the focus groups. So those were our educators, our PLC leaders, our coaches, curriculum leaders, department chairs, union presidents, all our administration, um our directors, uh union presidents sit down there twice, they're really important. I wanted to make sure we made that point, that was part of the conversation. Um but and then there was anybody, any teacher who wanted to come and chat with them had that opportunity. So we have these three prongs. Now, in many situations, we have consultants come in, you say, okay, study these three things and then tell us the answer. And what does anybody do who gets that report? Do they read the whole report? No, they read the answer.
Yeah.
Right, and we said, don't do that because one, it'll save us money because we don't have to pay you to do that. And two, it's going to force all of these people to have to dig into those three aspects and figure it out. And that's what we've been spending the last six months doing is looking at those three reports and saying, what do we do with this information? So what did our DS people and the focus groups tell us? They said, the leadership roles that we currently have that you saw in that chart, there's unclear expectations and uneven time for department chairs, curriculum leaders and PLC lea- leaders. So there's inequity there and they don't have enough time to do what they need to do. Administrative capacity, they said principals and assistant principals are bogged down um doing managerial things, keeping the trains running versus actually supporting teachers in the classroom, improve their instruction. Our instructional coaches, which we have um two at Pine Hill and two at Chickering, one math, one um literacy each, are fantastic, but we're asking them to do much because, too too much because they're fantastic, so we're diluting their capacity to do anything well. Professional learning, which of course, like yesterday, um we have goals, we have support from coaches, um but it's just not working well with the goals the teachers are developing and the feedback they're getting, so we have to align it so that we're all kind of asking and working towards the same thing. Um and then communication and alignment, I mean, this is loud and clear, we've heard this from day one, is you have Denny who is overseeing eight disciplines across thirteen grades and he is the only glue right now. And there is not good articulation from K to twelve English, from K to twelve world language, from K to twelve math. Somebody needs to draw these lines. So that's what our DS folks said. If you look at literature, they said you've got to make sure that you have two kinds of leadership. You have to have the vision, like who sets the vision, what are we trying to accomplish? And then you have to have others who work with you to accomplish that, that's the distributive leadership model. What literature also said is that any teacher leader, whether you're at elementary, middle or high school, who has supervisory duties and instructional coaches who are in the classroom working with teachers, modeling, giving feedback um for a prolonged period of time versus a one-and-done PD where you go to a workshop for forty-five minutes, it's supposed to change your teaching forever. Um when you have teacher leaders who supervise and and have some accountability and some teeth and then you have coaches who are working with you for a long time, that's what's going to change teaching in the classroom. Um and when teach, when districts invest in training, release time for these folks um in ongoing training versus a one-and-done workshop, that's when you start to notice difference, differences. What can we learn from our comparable districts? Everybody has an assistant superintendent who is the central driver, check, we've got Denny. Um department heads, which we only have theoretically at high school because that's what they're labeled, but here, it's anybody with supervisory duties um or who can help with curriculum alignment is super important. What's noticeable here is when you look at all of our comparable districts, their teachers with supervisory duties who serve in some sort of capacity as either a department head or a curriculum coordinator only teach one or two classes. Maybe three, not four. We're the only district where our department chairs are teaching four classes, they don't have enough time. Instructional coaches, um again, need to be focused in the classroom and not pulled to do three different things, which ours are done. Um tur- time to work with the teachers is super important and, yes. And yes, this is a financial investment that if you look at other districts' budgets and the org charts, you'll see these positions are there. So, what does that mean for us? It's loud and clear and it, you know, from these consultants that came in who don't know us well, that we have very skilled educators, that they like to work together and they're committed to growth. There's no question about that. So, we have good material to work with, but we really need to standardize roles and expectations. We need to expand capacity for our department chairs and coaches to be in the classrooms doing the work with the teachers. There needs to be more time and more availability. We need to be better at taking our goals and our coaches' feedback and our evaluation feedback and making sure they're aligned and giving time to teams to work together and then really trying to figure out that K to twelve alignment and who's gonna make sure that the building blocks continue to grow, K to twelve. So, that's where we're at. So, we've gone back and we're processing this information with all of the people you saw in that focus group and we are hoping to come forth with a proposal to the school committees in terms of any shifts or adjustments we need to make moving forward as a result of us.
That's a lot.
Happy to address any questions or concerns. I know you guys have been sitting for a long time.
I think what it shows is there's a lot of work to be done and a lot, not as many people as we need doing all the work because there's too much work to do.
Or we just need to shift who's doing the work and how they're doing the work, but something is to shift.
Something's gotta shift. The four classes was enlightening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially because I think, you know, some of, at least the kids' favorite teachers are the department chairs. So, that's sad if they're gonna be teaching one less class now, but yeah, it's important for them to have the time to do their job.
Yeah. And not all of them wanna give up teaching.
Right.
You know, they went into teaching to be teachers.
Right.
So, then what? You don't wanna have more time as administrators necessarily.
See, all that, there's not enough hours in the day.
So, we'll come forth with a proposal to start your January joint meeting because it's a K to twelve conversation.
Thank you.
I'm just excited that somebody came in and helped us do the work. And now we have something to work with.
That's amazing.
All right. So, I need four Denny's is what I took away from this.
We need a.
I wish I could do it all. I mean, it's hard because I wanna give the teachers what they need, but I'm bouncing back and forth between trying to do some elementary social study stuff and then I go to middle school math and then I go to high school world language and I feel like I can like get some stuff started, but like I know what they need. It's just that I can't give all the time and the, that they deserve.
I think somebody who might be sitting at this table, I had a conversation with and he had a really good analogy, which is right now, we have one quarterback who can carry one football down the field at a time, but we have lots of footballs that we wanna move. So, how many quarterbacks should we have? So, to your point.
There you go. Well, thank you. Well, speaking of lots of things to move around, Dawn, financial reports. It's a lot of.
Dawn's gonna show us where to get the money to do this.
Exactly, right? So, I mean, there's a lot of discussion points and I think that's where choices will have to be made.
Right.
Right? So, that's, that's all I'm here to say today. Yeah, first time ever, I did not have enough hours in the day to finish my fiscal year twenty-six monthly report because yesterday was December first and the month ended on Friday. It was a long weekend. I did go to see my daughter for Thanksgiving, so.
And you're driving around all of our houses.
I was driving around. Trying to finish the budget, but so, but I will email those to you, but I have the numbers. There's not significant changes from your November statements, but I do know that it's a good document to have as you're looking at the budget. So, I will, I have them here, just need to finish my report. On that note, we did get our E and D certified. So, it was certified at a little bit, a number a little bit lower than I had in my financial report, only because they take away from our E and D balance any prepays. And so, there were three prepays that they took away and I will have that in the packet, the copy of the E and D. But we are at like three percent. So, we did get ourselves up above the two point six where we were last year. We had a good financial year last year, if you remember. So, we were able to use some of our surplus towards the turf and the track and then some of it to sort of build back up our E and D a little bit. So, that has happened since we last met. So, I'll get those financial reports to you in your packet, too, was the warrants. There weren't very many since the last time we met and Jeff is all up to date on signing those. So, moving on to sort of the main topic of the night for me is just the overview of version one point O with the fiscal year twenty-seven financial budget. And so, if you had a chance to look through the book, it's a lot of good information. Obviously, we won't go into it in detail tonight. I just wanna make a few comments. I think the overview sort of sets the stage, but if we look at sort of like, look at expenditures first because, right, expenditures is what drives our revenues. So, on the expenditure side, basically, our school operating budget is like sixty-six percent is our staff. The staff, us staff, the staff to educate, the staff to clean the buildings at night, the staff to clean our, to run the front offices. And all of those contracts right now are in negotiations. So, I don't have my normal intro about this is what goal is, this is what steps and lengths are, because we don't know what fiscal year twenty-seven numbers look like. What we do though, is do a best guess estimate of what we feel is a nice, a good reserve to cover every single employee in the district. So, the number that you see sort of sitting in the school committee line item for its backslash contractual reserve represents sort of the pool of money that we put aside for every salary in the district. And so, until we settle contracts, it sort of sits there, but it's a good base. We have to put something in the budget so that we have a budget to approve, but that makes that discussion a little different every three years. The next line item that's the largest cost for us is benefits. And if you've been watching the news, we all know that healthcare is hitting, you know, high rates, premium increases, high costs for pharmaceuticals and we, every employer is feeling and employee is feeling sort of a pain from that. We are, as you know, participate in a joint purchasing agreement with through Western Urban Health Group. We usually set our rates in February. I'm on my second year of being on that steering committee, so I sort of have greater insight and some, you know, a little more discussion or ability to put ideas out there. I think the one benefit of being part of a joint purchasing agreement is that we all can come together and if we have a reserve, we can sort of work with the rates that's gonna work for all the towns. And so, I'm hopeful that even though I put a fifteen percent premium increase in as a placeholder, that we will come a little bit below that. But I think fifteen percent is probably not out of the realm of possibilities. So, not a number that any of us like to hear, but there is a fifteen percent assumption for premium increase. You're not seeing that dollar for dollar fortunately because we've also had some changes in the number of employees who take our health insurance along with, we've got multiple plans that people can choose from and we did see some migration from some of the higher cost plans to some of the lower cost plans last open enrollment, which started July first. So, that was, that helped because you only see a ten percent increase on the line item, even though there was fifteen percent increase on the rates. So, and the other big piece of the benefits, which is, you know, again, twenty percent of our budget basically is our contribution to the Norfolk County retirement. So, that is for any employee who's not in the educator's retirement plan, we have to pay, you know, our actuarial assumption for that pension and that's usually around eight hundred and forty thousand. This year, they have actually had an actuary evaluation where we already know what our fiscal year twenty-seven and our fiscal year twenty-eight contributions are. Because normally, I'm putting a placeholder in at this time of year for that, but that number that you have in the budget is the number that it's going to be and I know that it's gonna be relatively flat for fiscal year twenty-eight. So, that is a positive piece of information to pass along. And the third piece of that is the cost for us, for our retirees, for their health insurance. And remember, that includes fifty percent of their cost as well as our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual contribution to our OPEC fund. Other than that, you can see we run pretty lean. If you add those two pieces up and you look at our other expenditures of, you know, take out the placeholder that's sitting in other expenditures right now, you're looking at like a million six for everything else here, a million two for transportation and then about a million three to sort of upkeep the property, the buildings, no removal, you know, all of our preventive maintenance plans, our utilities, which I am concerned about utilities, I will say, as we all know. Utility market is acting a little crazy, whereas I expect little increases in some of our rates that we have no control over. So, we're waiting to see how that plays out, but I'm hoping that we have sufficient numbers. We've been running a little low in previous year, so we don't have to increase. Hopefully, we have what we need in there. And then, it's lovely to see the zeros for debt service. I'm still relishing the fact that we have completely paid off the middle school and that's been a huge asset or help to both towns on head of debt service. So, you're looking at about a five percent increase in the operating budget for just the end district. We then take that budget number and have to run it through our assessment calculation to determine on the revenue side, what Dover's gonna have to pay and what Sherburne's gonna have to pay. And the main driver of that is our census. So, you'll see the enrollments and you'll see the census table on your assessment calculation that shows how many Dover students and how many Sherburne students as of November first. That's what rolls into that calculation and Sherburne actually picked up point oh five percent. So, there, assessment percentage went up by point oh five and Dover's went down. You keep in mind, any increase or decrease in the assessment is an automatic increase or decrease to what their assessment's going to be without us even touching any increases on the budget. So, I'm always wanna point that out because there's some increase to Sherburne's assessment that's not really budget, it's because they have more students and vice versa, Dover's seen a little bit of it. So, we're looking, I think, the last four or five years, there's a continuous small increase in Sherburne's assessment over Dover's. But that's what, so then that, that looks at sort of what their increase is going to be for us. So, if you look at your Dover assessment for fiscal year twenty-seven, Dover's looking at a five point one two percent increase and Sherburne's looking at a six point two two percent increase. So, I know those are probably numbers that at this point, they're not gonna relish, but that is. It's not necessarily what our budget increases, it's what the calculation then says. And that is also a derivative of what funding we get from the state, knowing that the number that we put in this version one point O is our fiscal year twenty-six numbers because we don't know what fiscal year twenty-seven is going to be. Those numbers, at least the preliminary governor's budgets, released at thirty of January, so when I come back to you in February, we'll be hopeful that that will provide us additional revenues and then by doing that, that helps offset the assessments for Dover and Sherburne. I did go ahead and allocate some excess and deficiencies, so your E and D funds, to the fiscal year twenty-seven budget, which also helps offset the Dover and Sherburne assessments, knowing that our past practices, that we use our excess revenue from the current year. So, if you looked at your financial statements from October, you'll see that we're running about a hundred fifty, hundred and sixty thousand dollar surplus in revenue. That I've applied directly to the fiscal year twenty-seven budget. So, that's not taking away from our E and D balance, that's looking at surplus that we are accumulating, that if we've known that we were gonna get this much in revenue this year, it would have offset their assessments this year, so we're giving them the credit next year. So, that does help and normally, I don't put E and D in version one point O, but again, with our budgets being the way they have been the last two years, I wanna be as helpful to the towns with version one point O as we can. And so, you will see that hundred and fifty thousand reflected. I have, I feel pretty comfortable that that number will go up a little bit, not by hundreds of thousands, but it might go up, you know, fifty or sixty thousand, which will, which will help us. In version one point O also is, you know, we're not taking into account any potential retirements that may come down the pike. It's really hard if you consider that we are still sort of in the beginning of this year a little bit to already have to start looking ahead to the next year and knowing that there's so many uncertainties and so many pieces of the economy on top of some of the new initiatives that we're talking about. But I think we built a budget that we felt would allow us to take on some of those new initiatives within what we're presenting this evening and it's just then making those determinations of what, which ones moving forward. Let's see. I think that's a big piece of the regular region budget. Are there any questions on that? Again, in your packet, you've got a detailed general ledger. You've got three years actual, then you've got twenty-six budget and twenty-seven budget, where there were changes. I tried to give some notes off to the side. You have enrollment numbers. You've got the projections. You also then have the October and November enrollments, like both middle school and the high schools, so you can sort of see how things are going. We use both those numbers in certain of our calculations. The one thing I still need to do is calculate the capital assessment rate. I need, we're still finalizing the private school tally and that rolls into that. The only, and that didn't impact the operational budget this year because there's no capital, but I will get that so the towns know how to spread the capital that you guys approved back in November and that's in tab five of your work. You have in your binder as well, the budget guide that's been both Dover and Sherburne, that I think is important for you to read and see where they're coming from financially along with our strategy. Again, some of the things that were discussed tonight are coming right out of that strategy, our five-year strategy, which is there for, to refresh your memory. And, oh, and then you have a really good summary of staffing and a summary of the grants. Again, the grants is one of those things too that will, you know, I think the title grants, we're not sure what's gonna happen and now there's even talk about what's gonna happen to you, especially that. But that gives you insight as to what this budget is built on as far as what you rely on for the grants. Okay, so then the second new thing we have is the out of district. And we'll definitely need to spend some time finalizing sort of how that looks, but in your budget books, in tab two, you have town of Dover calculation and a town of Sherburne calculation, out of district. And it is based on, for you, here, it's students that are in sixth grade through age twenty-two.
Looks like this is the last, third to the last page in tab two.
So, there's town of Dover and there's town of Sherburne. So, as we've been, as we talked about earlier this fall, the Department of Education wants us to change the accounting for out of districts. They're interpreting our regional agreement to say that the towns are responsible for the net cost, but that doesn't mean that the region should be setting all costs to the town. So, we should be assessing the towns and all the accounting who are out of district should take, should take place here on our books and be reported on our end of the year report, which it's not right now. So, we are now gonna have, if you looked at your assessment calculation, it has the, since we don't have debt anymore, I was able to change that to out of district because this is calculated town by town. It's not related to any kind of a assessment percentage. It's clearly just the out of district students that reside in those towns. So, the two locals are so used to hearing about this because it's a big part, Jeff, you know, of the budget. So, now theirs looks tiny and the biggest piece is here, but we have to look at it a little differently and it's more of a different perspective for Dover. Because Dover's budget methodology for out of district is they always put a hundred percent of the cost into the Dover school budget and not taking into account the reimbursement they're gonna get from the state. Whereas Sherburne always assumes that we're gonna, we're going to budget net of the reimbursement we're gonna get from the state because that makes their budget easier to manage. Where Dover. Where Dover was used to just the school giving back a large give-back every year because of the reimbursement, that was not budgeted for, right? So they get a million dollars in, they'd already, they'd budgeted a million dollars, so we basically, if we had a year where we operated based on budget, we gave a million dollars back out of our budget. So this will be a little change for their, how it's gonna look in their budget, because what we're doing now is taking our estimated cost for Dover, for instance, is fifteen placements, it's two point two five million dollars. But we're gonna be receiving a million two in reimbursement, based on the cost that we are incurring, well, actually, the Dover School Committee is incurring this year to help offset that. So we're assessing them, the net cost of that, plus transportation. So Dover is seen, built into their region assessment for out of district, a million three seventy-five, so that's their estimate we're using right now. And to look at it, I think it's important to look at it as a age three to twenty-two, because that's how the towns have been used to looking at that budget number. So Dover's budget went out two weeks ago, and they have a budget of two hundred and forty-five thousand, they only have, they have less than three placements, it's not a big number, so if you add that to the amount here at the region, they're looking at a total town out of district budget of a million six two. Last year, they had a budget of two point five million, but remember, they had that grossed out for the circuit breaker reimbursement. On the flip side, you have Sherburne, who's got ten placements, ages six to twenty-two, with an estimated cost of a million two. We're estimating they have four hundred thousand dollars in circuit breaker that'll be coming in next year to apply against that. So their total cost, including transportation for twenty-seven, is a million one twenty-five. We haven't finalized Sherburne's local school budget yet, but I did a quick estimation, and it looks like their school budget net of circuit breaker would be four hundred thousand, so their total fiscal year twenty-seven budget for the town for out of district would be a million five. Their budget last year was a million one. So they are gonna see an uptick, it has nothing to do with how they're changing the county, it's based on the students that they're placing out. But it's, to have any relevance for the rest of us who've been looking at out of district always from three to twenty-two, we wanted to pull all the pieces together for all the committees, so that you could at least have a basis of what has changed from year to year. We did have a meeting with both towns, the finance committees, and walked through this, and one of the exhibits we utilize is the extra page that I put in Asia, I have your copy here, just to sort of, everyone understands what net cost is when we're looking at an out of district placement, the amount that the towns have to pay regardless, and then how circuit breakers calculated, and then how transportation plays into this. So I'm still working out how this, financially, this is gonna work. The region needs to protect itself, because if we get unexpected placements, we don't have any place to go for that money, and so we're being conservative in this and that. Although there is some reimbursement for transportation, I'm gonna build the towns in their assessment a hundred percent, and we may even hold some of their circuit breakers, so, I mean, it's complicated, but we, actually, the region gets all the circuit breaker for ages six through twenty-two, I have to calculate it and give it to the towns. We may ask them to keep their fourth quarter payment, so that we've got to build a little bit of a safety net for ourselves here. So I'll have to work that out with the town, but we're still trying to figure out, just in this transition, to get us up and running, you know, there's a few tweaks that we need to make. So it's new to you guys to see, and I will provide more detail, similar to what I usually do for the locals, just to give you an idea of the age of the placements, the type of schools they go to. It does just have a lot of accounting to deal with, so we didn't get to that specifics, but I, we need to get something to put as a placeholder, as the towns build their budget. So this will change here, financials will, I mean, we'll probably have a second page of financials, because it does have to be accounted for by town-specific. I can't, we're not co-mingling this, we're probably gonna set up different funds on our general ledger system to account for their circuit breakers and their out of district cost, and then we'll report those out to you separately.
It's gonna be more detail.
There's more moving parts for the region now, because you own your own out of district students, and to dock the point, you don't have a reserve built in yet, so we need to build one for unexpected placements.
Because as you know, towns could have a sped stabilization fund, so like Sherburne's had to draw from their stabilization fund. Dover does it, because Dover funds like basically a stabilization fund by not accounting for any circuit breaker. So that's what I'm melding together, two or two towns who account for circuit breaker, you know, differently, and how we sort of like then have to make our own policy here at the region.
In three years, this will all be ironed out, and it'll be perfect.
Oh, yeah, oh, in a year, it won't take three years, in a year. So I know it's been a long night, again, this is usually just the rollout, we've gotta get something to the towns, it's version one point O, but it sort of sets the storyline for us, knowing that you're gonna meet again in February, actually, twice in February, well, January, twice in February, and then in March is when we have to build the final budget. So we have three months, actually, three and a half months to continue these discussions. So as you're at home thinking about things, just let Angie know, and she can pass it along to us, so we can make sure we address them.
And hopefully, do we think the negotiations will be done at that point soon?
By March.
In an ideal world.
Yeah.
But we don't have a crystal ball. It's all Jeff, he's the chair.
Jeff, here. So I will ask you to approve the budget as presented, both the operating budget as well as the out of district assessments, and I'll, we'll have to fine-tune that wording, but if you look on the first page of tab three, it actually has the total assessment of each town with their out of districts included, so that is the total, those are the totals that you're approving for us to send along to the towns tonight.
I don't have to put that, I can just do it as approved, right?
Yes, as presented, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay, so do, I have a motion to approve the budgets as presented for the operating and the out of district budget for version one point O. Jeff?
I move.
Second, Democratic?
Any discussion? All in favor? Great, so all four of us, okay, that's done, thank you, Dawn. So.
We're doing all the consent items?
A C E D, A C E D recommendations, yeah, so we have two more votes, this, and then the consent, and then.
Right.
The finish line is near, you're at mile twenty-six. Okay, so A C E D, so you have the teacher's contract, which we now know is open at the table, and the back of the teacher's contract is appendix C, which lists the stipends that department chairs get, the stipends that the chess advisor gets, the stipends that the basketball coach gets. That we have to revisit every year, because you don't want a club to pop up, or a club to expand in size, and not have the teachers compensated for that for three years until the contract's open again. So every year in November, we have a committee of three, well, we have three voting members of educators and three voting members of administrators come together to review proposals or changes that the educators feel are appropriate from year to year. We met as a committee in, on November twelfth, and as your memo says, there was some proposed changes. Thank you. So at this point, the voting members of that committee feel that they would like to offer an educator-mentor second-year option, so as you know, any teacher new to Dover Sherburne gets a mentor in their first year. Sometimes, just based on whether a teacher might be brand-new to the field, or perhaps they're struggling in an area, might benefit from having a mentor the second year, so the committee felt that it was appropriate to compensate a mentor who's working with a teacher for a second year. Let me back up for a second, this is all done in ratios. So if you are given a stipend of a one point O ratio, that's equivalent to sixteen hundred dollars. If you're given a point five, it's eight hundred dollars. If you're given a two point O, it's thirty-two hundred dollars, so it's an increment of sixteen hundred. So for the educator-mentor, for a second-year mentor, the proposal is they get point seven five of the ratio, which would be twelve hundred dollars per mentor. Luckily, that's currently covered through a grant, which we hope will continue moving forward. The senior project advisor, our seniors have an opportunity in April to either maintain the classes that they're taking, or go out into the real world and have a mentorship or work on a project. This has become larger and larger as opportunities have grown for our kids and responsibilities have grown, so the advisors have come forward and said, we used to, there's two advisors, we used to split a three point O, and we really think that, you know, it should be a four point O ratio, which would be an increase of sixteen hundred dollars, and the committee agreed. DECA is new to us, it's a club based on business and marketing, you might have had it in your high schools, it's international, I had the opportunity to judge a competition last year. Our kids and all kids who participate in this are phenomenal with their presentations. This is one of the most popular clubs at the high school now, and they've been, the advisors have been doing it for free. They came forward and requested a six point O ratio, which is probably legitimate, but we're just not there yet, we might have to find some ways to, for the kids to fundraise to support this. So we, the committee advised that we give them a three point O ratio at this point in time, to be split between the two advisors. The medical club, it's new, you heard Elise talk about it, it's run for a couple years, they requested a one point five ratio, when we compared them to Model UN and Tufts Inquiry and all the other groups, which there's no like apples-to-apples comparison, but we try to do our best, we said a one point O was probably more appropriate, and that's what the committee agreed. As you know, our eighth graders take a trip to DC. Students also have an opportunity, if they don't wanna go to DC for whatever reason, whether they don't wanna be away from home, or they have a medical situation, our eighth grade teachers provide a trip to Boston, which is not overnight, but it's still jam-packed of three days of fun and entertainment and lots of coordination. Our DC coordinators have been getting a stipend, we increased that last year, because again, the needs and the demands have increased. The Boston advisor has never gotten a stipend, so we're recommending a point five for that person to recognize all the coordination and planning that goes into that. And then our green team at the middle school, who coordinates all of our recycling and our composting and our garden, has increased their work, so they're looking to go from eight hundred dollars to sixteen hundred dollars, going from a point five to a one point O. So this is, there's some that the committee did not approve, these are the ones that the committee felt you should consider adding to next year's budget, so that we can fund them. I will say that the high school department chairs, we've been talking about department chairs, for a second year in a row, have come forward and said, you know, for years and years, we've taught four out of five subjects, so we do have that one period to do our work. For years and years, they've had a five point five ratio, they asked to increase it to seven point O last year and this year. Last year, the committee said no, because we wanna engage in this study that you just heard about and find out the outcomes. They came forward again this year and said, can we have it now, based on the findings? And we said, we haven't figured out the perfect model yet, and how we're gonna compensate you for your responsibilities at times, so can you wait? So we voted on it, and it was a three to three tie. So there is nothing in the contract that explains what you're supposed to do if the A C E D committee has a tie vote. So I'm putting it forth for you to consider whether or not you wanna add that to the budget now as a tie, or if you wanna wait and to see what the recommendations from the larger study are before you decide whether or not more compensation is required. That's up to you to discuss. And lastly, we just changed some of the titles, so that when you see drama on a contract, you know it's, they're referring to the director of drama, and musical is the director of the musical, not to be confused with people who organize other parts of those events.
And they wanna make it consistent with how the high schools listen.
Exactly. So happy to address any questions. Again, the committees are recommending that those first six bullets you add to the budget, you don't have to, you can add some of them and not others, that's up to your discretion because you own the budget. And then we're saying to you that the high school request was tied three-three, so do you wanna move forward with it, or do you wanna wait to see what the recommendations are from the study?
So should we do this in two parts, I think would be the easiest thing?
Sure.
What do you, I mean.
Two parts.
Well, because of the, the high school, the tie at the high school, to say what we're voting on.
Yeah.
Because this could be fractured into two different things.
Right, and again, you don't have to approve all six of these either, so you might ask perhaps if there's any that don't, that people feel shouldn't move forward, otherwise you can vote them as a package.
Okay, so, that being said, let's open the floor with regards to the, the new budgetary amounts in the six listed positions. Is there any discussion?
Hey, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One really specific one, on the DC coordinators, where we're giving them a stipend. Are we paying for that, or is World Strides paying for that?
They're paying for that.
It's not, it's not their cost to go on the trip, it's just the cost to coordinate, the work, the plan, everything.
But World Strides is sending us money, too, so where does that go?
They don't.
They don't send us money.
They pay the money the kids pay, yeah, it goes towards the chaperones going on the trip and the kids going on the trip.
And there's no stipends to the teachers?
We, you, well, you all pay the stipends out of the operating budget to plan the trip. The tuition that the kids pay to go on the trip covers the kids to be able to go on the trip and the chaperones to go on the trip. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but the person coordinating, World Strides not sending them cash stipends?
No, you do. Otherwise, we'd have to increase the amount that we charge the eighth graders.
Okay.
And that's going up exponentially anyways.
Okay, I just worked in this industry for a long time, and the coordinators always got pretty large stipends, especially from World Strides. So that doesn't happen here?
It doesn't, and it could, but we'd have to increase the cost for the kids. And we're already finding that we're having more and more kids need scholarships, so that money has to come from somewhere, too, so it's kind of, you're gonna end up contributing either way.
There's some payroll issues with that as well, I mean, the first, it did come up, it wasn't a huge stipend, but there were some payroll issues as well.
Okay, okay, so this is just coming straight from there. And then, secondly, on this particular area where we're adding new ones, or like adjusting, what's the cadence that we're taking a look at, like, clubs that are no longer have the good, have like strong attendance, or they're waning, or like, are we still paying out these stipends, or is it, what's that process look like?
So there's a few that don't run, that are still enlisted, and they're not running because there aren't enough kids, like the China program, we're not doing exchange anymore.
Yeah, but I have a budget for that.
Yeah, for speed.
Everything else basically runs. But I do think that there, so if you look at, so a student, high school student pays seventy-five dollar student activity fee, and they can participate in everything, so that helps fund it a little bit, but if you, you can look at your revenue, because you have your budget now, I mean, that's a small amount, based on, if you go and look at your high school activity advisors in your budget, you'll see now, again, that has other things like the National Honor Society, peer leaders, more than just the clubs. But I do think that, just to your point, it would be worthwhile to sort of have a more active look at those on an annual basis, maybe set a budgetary amount or something, because every year we add.
It's pretty, you keep adding thousands of dollars, like, you might not, like, eight hundred dollars, okay, that's not bad, eight hundred dollars, but then all of a sudden, we're adding ten thousand dollars, like, and not taking anything back.
Right, and, you know, not as many students, either.
Yeah.
Right, because if they're participating in DECA three days a week, they're not participating in something else now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's something that we need to probably work with the union to look at, how we can address that moving forward.
Yeah, so that'd be my one thing, I don't necessarily have an issue with these additions, but just generally, make sure we're controlling them.
Yeah.
I have a question, with the committee's tied vote, can you remember, like, some other hesitations?
I think there is both a commitment to recognize that the department chairs are valuable, and they do do a lot of work, and their work has increased, as all of ours have over time. So there is that strong feeling of like, they need to be recognized and compensated for all that they're doing, and then there's the, yes, but that might not be the solution, and we just poured out this time and money and conversation to the study, so can we just wait to find out what the recommendation is, because it might be that, or it might be something else. You know, it could be, yes, we're gonna increase their stipend, or it could be, they're only gonna teach three or four classes instead, and that's where they're gonna get their time. So there was, there was two sides, it was, yes, we know they need something, and the other side said, yes, but we don't know what that is yet, so can we wait?
And so what does that wait look like? Do we know yet?
So probably, you know, as I gave you the overview, the conversations of, what do we wanna propose moving forward, like, Brandon came to you with a proposal tonight, I think we're gonna come to you with a proposal of how to support our department chairs and our curriculum meters and everybody moving forward at our January joint meeting, so it's just till January.
And they were aware of that as well, the lady?
Yeah, and Denny and I are meeting with them all next week to kind of talk about those proposals and brainstorm and work through them with all of the folks involved before we bring it to you in January.
All right, and so in January, if we've resulted that, oh, you know what, we should be giving them more money. them more money, there's a place for that to happen in time for this.
Yes, yeah. Good question.
Because you have it till March, basically, right?
You just have to be careful because when your personal ambitions and goals are blocked out because of time, that's when professional frustration sits in and burnout and it becomes a real problem. So the only way you can compensate is monetarily until you get temporized, so.
Right.
I generally think monetary compensation helps mitigate staff turnover.
And just for clarity, all, when, when did these all go into effect?
Next, next year.
Except for next year, so timing of this.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no, there's no money.
Yeah, this is worth this year too. Okay, so long as we make this, it's in my March, then. Yeah.
Right. So we, we've got time.
Yeah.
But it's just good to have it discussed now.
So do we wanna break these into two?
I, I think, I, I, what do you, I think we should just because I think they're two different issues for me. I'm seeing two different things.
Yeah, I mean, you basically can make a motion to whatever you want with the approved with the recommendations from A C E D, and then the last one's not a recommendation. It's like.
Right.
It's a, it's a split.
So we can hold on that decision and make a affirmative or a negative voter on these.
Yeah, and you, you know, you could vote, we only wanna move forward with DECA and the medical club. I mean, that's your option too.
Yeah.
So I think that's why. It's not all or nothing.
Right.
Andy's first question is.
Can I, can I make a motion that we would vote all of these together?
Okay, that's, do I have a second?
I'll second it, yeah.
Kevin, second? Any discussion on that?
So I'm just gonna just ask though, so by voting those right now with your vote, you would be adding all that money to the budget.
Right, 9,600.
Right, but is, is that your intention?
Well, do we, I guess our question is, do we have room in the budget, which we don't know, because all of our numbers aren't in. I feel like we're like in the housing thing where we don't have the numbers of what the actual jobs is. Because my thing is, I, just coming from me, I feel like, like the new clubs, obviously DECA needs funding. Obviously, the Boston trip coordinator, they've had nothing. So I feel like all of these are in fact.
I mean, we have that, we have that group set in place to go through these. They kind of legitimized all these as actual work that's, that's happening. And there's no difference necessarily between one of these line items versus one of the dozens that are already on the previous one. It becomes a bigger question, does any of this end up get rolled into contractual negotiations? Will we move forward with this and then we take the contract as a separate negotiating point?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, so you can vote them now. You can leave it to the negotiating team to vote them. You can vote them now saying these are relevant and vetted with a stipulation that we expect somebody to look at the other ones to make sure that they still belong there. And hopefully have some savings.
Or at least try to make it budget neutral.
Right, which I think is doable, because if we have money approved for some that are no longer running.
Or robust.
Or robust. I mean, even some of them weren't running, like the China program.
Yeah, but the China program hasn't run for years, it's not in your budget.
No.
So that, that, you know, we, we don't carry that one in the budget because it hasn't run in.
Well, since 2020, my daughter was the one that was supposed to have gone on that trip, which never occurred. And it took me a year to get my money back from China. They had a direct draft out of my bank account.
Right. We don't, we don't gross the budget up on an annual basis for that one because we know it doesn't.
Yeah.
But I'll give you another example. So it might not even be, I mean, we also need to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, there might be a niche for some kids where it's their only niche. And if there are only five kids in that niche, do you really want to eliminate it? If that's the only place that student has to go, probably not. However, there are some listings in the appendix that probably need to be adjusted based on current numbers. They either need to be adjusted up because it requires more time and more students, or they need to be adjusted down because it's now less time and fewer students. So I do think that there are savings in the current list. Somebody just needs to go through that list and find it.
So I, 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 I'm wondering if maybe then the most prudent action is to, will the negotiating committee have time to like push this through? Because that's, I, I've been on the negoti, and it's just one more thing and it's one more sticking point. And I think that's why if we could take that off the plate, it would help. But if you're saying like money wise, would it be more prudent for us to go through the negotiating team and say, these are part of our budgetary analysis that we need to consider? I mean, I understand that as well. So I'm trying to figure out what is the best judicious way to do this for the funds of our district, but also to help, help our kids. Because, you know, the fact that we've never compensated the Boston trip coordinator, that is a lot. And it may be only for like a handful of students, but that's a lot of work. You know, DECA, obviously, there's a lot of kids in that club. So, you know, the educator mentor, I mean, obviously, that's deemed as important. So I, I mean, I'm leaning with Jeff to go ahead and approve it, and I know it's money in the budget, but I think we're gonna have to just go through and maybe figure out what's, what's not as robust that we can maybe not take it away, but maybe decrease the amount.
Right, and that can either be done at the table, or if we decide that that's too much to be done at the table, we can work with the union to do that as a side agreement.
Yeah, I, I just know with negotiations, it's really hard to get the basics ironed out, and I don't wanna add to it, but I also don't wanna not fund this because you said there was more that was brought. This wasn't all of it. So it has been vetted, and as far as I can tell.
So nine years ago, we opened up appendix C and we looked at all the athletic listings to try to, you know, increase and decrease and find parity. We haven't yet done that with clubs and activities. And so perhaps that's something the negotiating team needs to consider doing is opening to make sure that the chess club still functions at a whatever ratio.
Right. And I was on that team with the athletics. I remember that. And it was eye-opening because there were some things we could dial back, but some things we needed to increase.
Yeah.
Right, to be competitive.
Right, so we, I, I mean, so do we wanna, I, I mean, I have no other discussion other than what I put in for it. So we have a motion and a second, and that's the discussion. So let's go ahead and vote. Let's, let's do a roll call vote, if that's okay. Jeff?
Jeff, yes, for the 9,600.
And actually, the 9,600 is not what's gonna hit your budget. Does that include the 1,200? So you excluded the 1,200, okay.
Yeah.
So it would be more or less.
It'd be that, and then the mentors will come from a grant separately.
Okay, okay, so it would be.
9,600.
Okay.
So what are we saying yes or no to?
To the position budget for these six positions.
So now we're talking about the chairs yet. The chairs will be assessed.
Sure, sure.
Mary Louder, yes.
Okay, and Kevin?
Kevin Crady, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. So we'll just have to figure it out. We'll get it done. All right, so the next thing is the proposal to increase the stipend ratio from 5.5 to 7.0, the vote tied at three to three, whether we want to go ahead and vote that in or if we want to wait until they figure out what we had earlier.
I move to table this till we have more information presented at the January meeting.
Have a second? Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, law four, okay. So the next thing is the consent items, which is the approval of the regional school committee minutes, if anybody had any changes. I didn't see any changes, but my, my agenda kept flipping between this one and the other one, so it was kind of crazy. And then there's the Dover Sherburne High School Athletics Overnight Field Trips, which is for the hockey team going to Martha's Vineyard, if you read that. Also, advisory committee adding volleyball as a fall sport starting in 2026. It's kind of phasing in with each year to make it full.
It wasn't fall, like, it was this fall 26.
So they did, yeah, this year, I think next year, we're like, it's V1, then it's V2, and then it's full varsity.
Right.
And the first two years, it doesn't cost us anything.
Right.
And the third year, it costs us something.
Exactly, but this allows them to compete.
Right.
But is it girls and boys? Because I thought one was fall and one was spring.
It's just girls from what, because I went to the meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. That's helpful.
There's a volleyball club stipend.
Yeah.
That just got voted in last year, that first year is this year.
And then, and it's late, but the one thing was like, Chickering has the only tie downs for actually a volleyball court. And they've been cobbling together nets and things they got from other districts, but our gym doesn't have that, so that may be an eventual issue as they gather on. But they're competitive and just the nice thing about with the coach, it's a sport at Dover Sherburne that if you didn't play as a young child, you, you could pick up as a freshman and contribute. Yeah, so, yeah.
That's nice.
Lower hurdle to accessibility, yeah.
Yeah. And then the last thing was the approval of the DS Grid Iron Donation for the two football coaches that, yeah. So I think I can prove, do all these together.
Yes.
I mean, unless there's any questions that you have, but Kevin, thank you for helping with the volleyball, because I read it and I was like, it kind of steps up each year, which I thought was nice. I thought it was nice how they phased it in, to be honest.
And that's the normal progression with other sports.
Yeah, which I, I, I've never been here when we've been introduced to sport. This is my first one.
Indoor track.